So I will call to order the Common Council meeting of Tuesday, January 4th, 2022. And I'll ask the clerk to call the roll.
Alder Halverson?
Present.
Alder Harrington McKinney?
Present.
Alder Heck?
Here.
Alder Limer?
Here.
Vice President Martin? Alder Mayanti will be arriving later. Alder Vervier?
I do not see Alder Vervier yet.
Alder Vitavir?
Present.
Alder Weheli?
Here.
President Abbas?
Present.
Alder Alborz? Alder Alborz? Come back. Alder Benford? Alder Bennett?
Here.
Alder Carter?
Present.
Alder Conklin?
Present.
Alder Curry?
Here.
Alder Evers?
Here.
Alder Figuero Cole?
Here.
Alder Foster?
Here.
Alder Furman?
Present.
Alder Vervier?
Here.
Alder Alborz?
Here.
Madam Mayor, we have quorum.
Thank you. I have a few opening remarks to begin with, but let's first have the meeting instructions, please.
Thank you. Welcome to our virtual meeting. If you lose connection at any point during the meeting, you can reconnect by clicking the link or calling the number in your original email. Members, if you are able, please activate your video and keep it on for the duration of the meeting. Staff, if you are able, please activate your video when you are speaking. All panelists have the ability to mute and unmute themselves. Please continue to use the raise hand feature when you'd like to be recognized to speak, ask questions, or request a roll call vote. Lowering your hand will take you out of the queue. Members of the public have registered to speak. The name you entered on Zoom must match the name you entered in registration. You will remain muted until called upon. City staff will tell you when your time is up. After a speaking, a member of the council may ask you a question. If you need to share documentation with the council, please send it to the email listed on today's agenda. Mayor, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Let me start by wishing you all a Happy New Year. And to share wishes that 2022 will be a healthier and easier year for all of us and for our community. I also want to give you my regular reminder that we're all here to do the business of our constituents, the residents of Madison, and to try and keep that in mind and to refrain from using any profanity, whether you're a staff person, a council member, or an attendee, and to try and interact respectfully in this space. And then I want to let those of you know who might not know already that our former Park Superintendent Dan Stappé passed away last month. And some of you, perhaps Alder Vervier remembers him, others might not. But Dan was our Park Superintendent for 25 years. He was involved in the construction of Ulbrich Botanical Gardens, Elver Park, the Warner Park Community Center, Wingra Boathouse, the Warner Park Shelter, and many other neighborhood park shelters and improvements. He oversaw our golf courses, our ice arenas, the cross-country trails, the athletic fields, including Bree Stevens. And of course, as Park Superintendent, was responsible for acres and acres of our parkland, beaches, boats, ramps, and Forest Hill Cemetery. I just wanted to take a moment to remember Dan and his legacy and dedication to our park system and to recognize his service and to share with his family our condolences on his loss and to thank him and again and his family for his many, many years of service to the city and to our Parks Department. With that, President Abbas, suspension of the rules, please.
Thank you. Move motion to suspend rules 2.04 Order of Businesses, 2.05 Introduction of Businesses, 2.2 for Ordinances, and 2.25 Resolution for Items so designated on the agenda.
Second.
Moved and seconded to suspend the rules. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor? Seeing no objection, those rules are suspended and will move to our agenda. President Abbas, on item one, may I have a motion, please?
Yes, move motion to adopt.
Second.
Moved and seconded to adopt. It's my honor to read this resolution, which is Legisstar 68920, honoring the University of Wisconsin Women's Volleyball Team on winning the NCAA National Championship. And have to bring up my prop for this particular resolution. Whereas, the UW Women's Volleyball Team won the Division One NCAA National Championship for the first time in program history. And whereas, founded in 1974, the team previously played in three NCAA National Championship Finals in 2013 and 2019, losing in those finals to Nebraska, Penn State, and Stanford respectively. And whereas, this team included super seniors Dana Retke, Sidney Hilly, Grace Lowberg, Lauren Barnes, Georgia Sevita, returning for a fifth year of eligibility because of COVID-19, maybe the only thing, good thing we got from COVID-19, for a chance to battle for the NCAA National Championship. And whereas, they were joined by Jade Dempsey, Anna Smack, Julia Orizal, Devin Robinson, and Izzy Ashburn in making that dream come true when they knocked off unbeaten Louisville in five sets in the semifinals on Thursday, December 16th, 2021, an amazing game, and returned on Saturday, December 18th, 2021, to beat Nebraska in five sets, which ran three hours and 14 minutes, another amazing game. And whereas, individual team members earned amazing honors such as Dana Retke, the 2021 National Player of the Year, and the program's first five-time First Team All-American, and Sidney Hilly honored as a two-time First Team All-American, and Anna Smack named the Tournament Most Outstanding Player. And whereas, the team was led by head coach Kelly Sheffield and assistant coaches Brittany Deldine and Gary White, and additional team support staff, athletic trainer Kristen Walker, and strength and conditioning coach Kevin Schultz. And whereas, Coach Sheffield acknowledged that this team stands on the shoulders of the alums that have come before them. And whereas, the team has embraced their fans, the thousands who traveled to Columbus, Ohio to cheer them on, including eight-year-old Izzy Eaton, a young girl adopted by the team after they helped celebrate her sixth birthday. And whereas, the team has some of the strongest support in college volleyball, with screens at Union South, restaurants, local taverns, and thousands of living rooms, including mine, around the state tuned into the games, bringing Wisconsinites together to celebrate a deserving team. And whereas, thousands turned out for a welcome home celebration at the UW Fieldhouse after a parade of fire trucks led the team to the event. And whereas, the entire Madison community joins together in showing their admiration, appreciation, and even adoration for this team of strong women who have overcome adversities over the years of their college careers to emerge as national champions. And now, therefore, be it resolved that I, Mayor Satya Rhodes Conway, and the Common Council are included in their thousands of fans in congratulating this team on their amazing accomplishment. And with us here tonight is the incredible Coach Sheffield to receive this proclamation. Coach, thank you so much for joining us, and please feel free to say a few words.
Thank you for that. A heck of an honor and introduction. And I mean, this is, the community support is just, is unbelievable. I mean, it's been nonstop. It's just, it's another special place, reason about this city and this state. And, you know, we feel the love, we feel the support, and we're really appreciative of this honor here tonight.
Thank you, Coach. It's a pleasure to recognize your incredible work and your amazing team. Congratulations. Given my early remarks, I am not including some stronger language when I say national champions. Congratulations to you and your whole team.
Thank you, thank you.
And I hope you can see you're getting a virtual round of applause from the council.
I see it, I see it. Thank you.
Excellent. Well, then, before we vote, Vice President Martin?
Thank you so much, Madam Mayor, and thank you, Coach, for being here with us. I fancy myself a recreational athlete and love watching sports of all kinds. And I have to say that watching this team this season has been amazing. The competition has been insane, that the last game had us all on the edge of our seats. And I have to say that the only other time I've ever seen an entire, like, I was watching at a neighborhood tavern, and this is the first time, besides the U.S. Women's World Cup two summers ago, that I have seen a packed venue, a packed location, cheering their heads off for women's sports here in Wisconsin. So I thank you for everything that you do. Thank you, thank you for the incredible season that you put on. And I'm just, I'm just really grateful for all of the efforts, even though that I'm not 100% sure that I know what a libero does. I'm trying to learn. So thank you, guys, so much, and please pass our respects on to your team. Thank you.
I will thank you. My libero actually tells me quite often that she doesn't think I know what a libero is, so.
Thank you, Vice President Martin. And with that, is there any objection to recording an enthusiastic vote in favor of item one? Seeing no objection, we'll record that vote. Thank you again, Coach, for joining us. We very much appreciate it.
Thank you.
And then we'll move on to item two. And I think we'll take this as moved by Alder Vervier and seconded by President Abbas. And I'll turn it over to Alder Vervier.
Thank you, Mayor. With a heavy heart, it is my honor to read a resolution recognizing, honoring, and commemorating the exemplary life and public service of R. Richard Dick Wagner. Whereas Roland Richard Dick Wagner was born in Dayton, Ohio on September 29, 1943, and passed away on December 13, 2021, at the age of 78 in Madison, Wisconsin. And whereas Dick moved to Wisconsin in 1965 to pursue and earn master's and doctorate degrees in American history at the University of Wisconsin-Madison, and subsequently decided to make Madison his home. And whereas Dick was employed in state of Wisconsin civil service for 33 years, including joining the Wisconsin Department of Administration as a budget and policy analyst from 1979 until his retirement in 2005. And whereas Dick chaired the Madison Landmarks Commission and headed up the Historic Park Fund, which created the Period Garden Park in Mansion Hill. He lived in several Madison Landmark homes and was a founding member of Historic Madison, Inc. and the Madison Trust for Historic Preservation. And whereas Dick was appointed by Madison Mayors Paul Sodlin, Joel Scornica, Joe Sensenbrenner, Sue Baumann, and Dave Chislevich to numerous city boards, committees, and commissions. His service included sharing several city bodies, including the Plan Commission and the Urban Design Commission. And whereas in 1980, Dick was elected to the Dane County Board of Supervisors, where he served 14 years, including four years as chairperson. County service included the Dane County Regional Planning Commission, where he championed the first dark weather water quality plan, and on the Airport Commission, where he championed noise abatement efforts. He was instrumental in securing Dane County's participation in the construction of Monona Terrace Community and Convention Center. And whereas Dick was the first openly gay member of the Dane County Board of Supervisors, including four years as the first openly gay county board chair in Wisconsin, paving the way for generations of LGBTQ politicians, activists, and public figures in Wisconsin. And whereas, as one of the first dozen openly LGBTQ officials in the nation, in 1985, Dick was a founding member of the National Association and Conference of Gay and Lesbian Public Officials, now the Victory Institute, and co-hosted with now Senator Tammy Baldwin, the Fifth Conference in Madison. And whereas Dick was instrumental in enacting the city of Madison's gay rights ordinance in 1974 and Dane County's nondiscrimination ordinance in 1980, which paved the way for Wisconsin statewide nondiscrimination law in 1982. Whereas Dick's commitment to leadership extended far beyond his own political career through mentorship, advocacy, and in a variety of important positions under several different governor's administrations. Governor Martin Schreiber appointed him to the Wisconsin Arts Board, where he served as chairperson, and the Wisconsin Humanities Council. Governor Tony Earl appointed him as co-chair of the Historic Governors Council on Lesbian and Gay Issues. And whereas Dick served on countless state and local community organization boards, including Ulbrich Botanical Society for three decades, AIDS Network, Downtown Madison, Inc., Fair Wisconsin, and Friends of UW Libraries. Whereas Dick was one of the co-founders of UW Madison's LGBTQ Alumni Association and was a founding member and first co-chair of the New Harvest Foundation for LGBTQ charitable causes in the region. Whereas Dick authored two groundbreaking books, which together are widely understood to be the definitive history of Wisconsin's LGBTQ community. 2019's We've Been Here All Along: Wisconsin's Early Gay History, which documented Wisconsin's gay history from 1895 through the 1969 Stonewall Riots, and 2020's Coming Out Moving Forward: Wisconsin's Recent Gay History. And whereas Dick was recognized for his public service as the first recipient of Madison's Jeffrey Clay Erlanger Civility and Public Discourse Award in 2007, on the occasion of the publication of his first volume, Mayor Satya Rhodes Conway declared June 25, 2019, as R. Richard Wagner Day in the city of Madison. And whereas Dick will be remembered as a gentleman and a scholar, public servant, activist, leader, and trailblazer in Wisconsin's LGBTQ community, valued mentor and friend, chef, gardener, and gracious host, and as a kind, generous, and compassionate person who always treated others with dignity and respect. And whereas Dick's life and influence will continue to be an inspiration through his books, his work, his courage, and the work of those whom he mentored. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the mayor and common council recognize, honor, and commemorate the exemplary life and public service of R. Richard Dick Wagner.
Thank you, Alder Vervier. It's a tremendous loss to our community, and Dick will be missed by many of us, including me, very deeply. Is there any objection to recording a unanimous vote in favor? Alder Vervier?
Thank you, Mayor. If I could just say another word or two. Dick's life was one of public service, from nonprofit to city to county to state service. He had an outsized influence on our community and its future, particularly because it was so often in an unelected role. Dick's honoring resolution could have read even more like a resolution marking the departure of a longtime member of this body. That is, with the long enumeration of each of the city's boards, committees, and commissions, where Dick served over numerous decades with distinction, most often serving as chair, covering a wide range of issues facing our community. Dick's trailblazing work on behalf of the LGBTQ community is legendary. Among Dick's greatest legacies is his groundbreaking chronicles of Wisconsin's LGBTQ community. In fact, PBS Wisconsin is producing a documentary based on his two-volume work. Not as well-known is Dick's love and stewardship of Madison's parks, especially Ulbrich Botanical Gardens. He was instrumental in the creation of Period Garden Park in Mansion Hill, likewise, Kerr McGee Park in the Marquette neighborhood. Dick unbelievably died, as many of you know, in the park near his home that he helped to create and gardens he tended there for years. I hope that the Board of Park Commissioners will rename Kerr McGee Park in memory of a true champion of our parks. I want to announce that the funeral service scheduled to take place at Holy Wisdom Monastery this Saturday has been postponed. We made the difficult decision that it needs to be rescheduled later when it is safe for to gather and celebrate Dick's incredible legacy to our community. So Dick was beloved by so many in our community, I don't know of anyone that didn't like him. On a personal note, I lost a very close friend and mentor of 30 years. I, like countless others, will miss him dearly. I want to thank you all for honoring a life very well-lived.
Thank you, Alder Vervier. And please make sure that we get the word on when his memorial is rescheduled so that we can continue to honor him. Alder Carter?
Thank you, Mayor. I was just going to ask for that information to be sent to us. I served on the Urban Design Committee with Dick. He was a great mentor and taught me a lot, and I definitely want to be at his memorial. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. All right. Is there any objection to recording a unanimous vote in favor? Seeing no objection, we'll record that vote. That brings us to, with a deep breath, to petitions and communications. Item number three, President Abbas, a motion to accept the petition?
Move motion to accept the petition.
Second.
Moved and seconded to accept the petition in item three, which is Legisstar 68429. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor? Seeing no objection, that item is accepted. We have, let me refresh. Do not believe we have any early public comment, so we'll move on to the consent agenda. President Abbas?
Thank you. At this time, a consent agenda will be moved with the recommended action listing for each item except, number one, items which have registrants wishing to speak, number two, items which require extraordinary roll call vote and are not included on the consent agenda by unanimous consent, number three, items which all groups have separated out for discussion and debate purposes. Item, agenda item five to 12 are public hearing items. Item requested for exclusion is item number 47, Legislative File Number 68084, adopting the South Madison Plan as a supplement to the Comprehensive Plan and directing staff to implement the recommendation contained in the plan. And then item introduced from the floor for referral, Legislative File Number 69107, by title only authorizing an amendment to a non-competitive contract with aligned energy center for testing and vaccination services. Recommended action is referred to Finance Committee on January 10, 2022.
Right. Just will note that there are registrants on items, not wishing to speak, on items 59, five in support, and then 61 and 62, on each of those, one in support and one in opposition. Again, none of them wishing to speak. Are there additional exclusions, introductions, disclosures, recusals? Alder Furman?
Hi, Mayor. I'd like to exclude item number 62.
Number 62 will be excluded. Alder Weheli?
Alder, item 621.
Also, item 61 will be excluded. Alder Vitavir?
I need to recuse on item 28, Legisstar 68654. My spouse is an employee of USGS.
Just make sure the clerk has that. Right? It'll be noted as recusing on that. Are there any other separations, exclusions, introductions, disclosures, recusals? All right. So we'll just go over that one more time, then. Five through 12 is public hearing. On the exclusion list, we have 47, 61, and 62. And we have an item introduced from the floor with referral. So anything additional? Alder Harrington McKinney?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Could you tell me if item, the status of item 68427, the resolution?
Is there an agenda number, Alder?
It's probably easier for you, for me, not to find it.
Is it 62?
62.
Yes, was that excluded?
Yes, that was excluded.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Weheli, did you have something else?
Yeah, for item number 74, will that be something that will be discussed after 62 item? Or is that just a?
Alder, item 74 is a placeholder that's introduced tonight pending the outcome of the discussion. If it's relevant, it will move forward. If it's not, it can get placed on file in the future.
If, and maybe, maybe this is not the time, but I, if an outcome comes out for referendum, will it be possible to make another substitute or alternate?
Yes, Alder, if it's, if the will of the body is to move forward, it's just being introduced, so it will go, it will be referred to the work group and then back to the council. So there'll be ample time to discuss and have a substitute if you want.
Yeah, my recommendation is to refer, if we reached at that point, to the CCC also.
I think you.
When we, when we, when we reach there, then maybe help guide me to make the substitute. Instead of just referring to the TFA Committee, I would like to refer also to the CCC.
I think, actually, Alder, that this is the appropriate time to do that because it will go on the consent agenda. And so just in keeping, and I'll give you a minute to do this while Alder Carter is next, in keeping with the requirements that the council has adopted for itself, if you could identify the date. could identify the date of the next CCEC that it would go to, and then also the reason for the referral.
Okay.
And then I'll come back to you.
Okay, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Carter?
Yes, I was just going to ask if, after public comment, if we could go to item 62 regarding the referendum, only because we ran out of time last time for that, and I believe we need to, if I remember correctly, which don't go by my memory, that's why I depend on you, Mayor, that there's a deadline for it to get on the ballot or something, it has to be done this month. Am I right on that?
That's correct, Alder. I'll take that under advisement, and when we make it through the consent agenda, we'll see if we can get agreement to do that.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you, Alder Carter. Alder Foster?
Thank you, Mayor. And perhaps Attorney Haas could just confirm this, but I believe with the new procedure, the request for any additional referrals should just pull it off of the consent agenda, and then we will deal with it in its regular order, which in this case might actually help since we'll have had the discussion, so we'll probably have a sense anyway.
Thank you, Alder. You're probably right. I'm still getting used to your new process around referrals. Yes, the attorney confirms that that's the correct thing to do, so that's what we'll do. Alder Wihilehi, we'll just put it on the exclusion list and come to it in due time.
Okay, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. All right. Anything else? Seeing none, then President Abbas on the consent agenda.
Move motion to adopt the consent agenda?
Second.
Moved and seconded to adopt the consent agenda. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor? Seeing no objection, that is recorded, and we will move to our public hearings, which starts with item five, Legis 68456. Open a public hearing on a new license for Village Bar. On item five, we have three registrants. Matthew Fink of Verona in support, Thomas Oberwater of Middleton in support. Excuse me, two registrants, both in support and available to answer questions. Are there questions for either of our registrants? Seeing none, I will close that public hearing. President Abbas?
Move motion to grant.
Second.
Moved and seconded to grant. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor of granting? Seeing no objection, that item is granted. Item six is Legis 68457. Open a public hearing on a new license for Starkweather Brewing Company. On item six, we have no registrants. I will close that public hearing. President Abbas?
Move motion to place on file without prejudice.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Is there any objection to recording a unanimous vote in favor of placing on file without prejudice? Seeing no objection, that item is placed on file. Item seven is Legis 68458. Open a public hearing on a new license for Chiba Hut. On item seven, we have one registrant, Heather Gaulida of Milwaukee, in support, available to answer questions representing Chiba Hut. Are there any questions for our registrant? Seeing none, I will close that public hearing. President Abbas?
Move motion to grant with conditions.
Second.
Moved and seconded to grant with conditions. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor? Seeing no objection, that item is granted. Takes us to the report of the Board of Public Works. And item eight, which is Legis 68734. Open a public hearing on approving plans, specifications, and a schedule assessments for St. Paul Avenue, Ohio Avenue, Talmadge Street, Jackson Street, and LeFollet Avenue, Reconstruction Assessment District of 2022. On item eight, we have no registrants. I will close that public hearing. President Abbas?
Move motion to adopt.
Second.
Moved and seconded to adopt. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor? Seeing none, that item is adopted. Takes us to the report of the Plan Commission. And item nine, Legis 68213. Open a public hearing on amending table 28H1 to correct inconsistencies. We have no registrants on item nine. I will close that public hearing. President Abbas?
Move motion to adopt.
Second.
Moved and seconded to adopt. Is there any objection to recording a unanimous vote in favor? Seeing no objection, that item is adopted. Item 10 is Legis 68639. Open a public hearing on creating sections of the Madison General ordinances to change the zoning of property at 1017 North Sherman Avenue. On item 10, we have no registrants. I will recess that public hearing. President Abbas?
Move motion to re-refer to January 24 Plan Commission meeting.
Second.
Moved and seconded to re-refer. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor? Seeing none, that item is re-referred. Item 11 is Legis 68642. Open a public hearing on creating sections of the Madison General ordinances to amend a planned development district at 5818 Gemini Drive, amending both the general development plan and approving a specific implementation plan. I have no registrants on item 11. I will close that public hearing. President Abbas?
Move motion to adopt with conditions.
Second.
Moved and seconded to adopt with conditions. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor? Seeing no objection, that item is adopted. Item 12 is Legis 68644. Open a public hearing on creating sections of the Madison General ordinances to amend a planned development district at 5817 Halliway, amending both the general development plan and creating and approving a specific implementation plan. On item 12, we have no registrants. I will close that public hearing. President Abbas?
Move motion to adopt with conditions.
Second.
Moved and seconded to adopt with conditions. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor? Seeing no objection, that item is adopted with conditions, and that brings us to the end of our public hearings. I'll remind us that we have items 47, 61, 62, and 74 excluded. We've had a request to take item 62 up first. Is there any objection to taking up item 62? Seeing no objection, we will take up item 62. Give me a second. Which is Legis 68427. And I will turn, so I'll first note that we have two registrants on this item. Justice Castaneda from District 15 in support, available to answer questions, and Janet Hirsch from District 9 in opposition, not wishing to speak. Are there questions for either of our registrants? Seeing none, then we'll move to a presentation from Attorney Haas.
Thank you, Mayor. I can hopefully run through this briefly. I do have a PowerPoint. If I could share my screen. One second. Is the PowerPoint appearing? Great, thank you. Okay, so I want to thank Alder Furman for putting the PowerPoint together. This is based on previous information that was presented to the council prior to last April's referendum elections, with some updates based on the results of that election and the work of the TFOs Implementation Work Group. You're probably familiar with this history, but just a brief recap, the Task Force on Government Structure was created by the council to look into the structure of Madison City government and to basically ask the question whether that structure ensures that decision-makers are representative of and accountable to all residents of the city, or only those with the time, resources, and knowledge of the process. The Task Force met extensively over two years, consisted of six resident members, five council members, and had numerous open houses. Here are some of the key findings of the Task Force. Found that the city's current structure can be an impediment to full participation and representation, and is unfair to a large portion of the city's population, including residents of color and low income. Also, that the city's process and procedures can be an obstacle to resident engagement, citing nighttime meetings downtown, the complexity sometimes of Robert's rules, and the city liking adopting some evidence for resident engagement, which the council has discussed in various forums, including remote participation, opportunity for public comment and testimony, and accessible resources. The Task Force noted that Madison is an outlier among comparable cities in a few key areas, namely the number of boards, commissions, and committees being double or more than most comparable than other comparable cities, the number of alders significantly more representing smaller districts, and the city liking behind in technology and resources to support resident engagement. Other findings focused on the fact that the difference between representation, or the opportunity for representation, between alders who could work full-time on city business and those who did not or could not, and that sometimes being tied to the economics, and ultimately concluding that the current structure led to residents having disparate levels of representation, basically partly on how much time their alder is able to devote to city work. One key recommendation was transition to a full-time council. Also, there were recommendations to reduce the number of districts from 20 to 10, and increase the length of alder terms from two years to four years. These were key recommendations of a subcommittee of the Task Force. The Task Force recommended four-year terms for alders, even if other changes were not adopted. These were arguments that the final report of the Task Force presented regarding a full-time council, focusing on providing equal representation, again, so that it was not dependent upon the time that an alder had available to do the job, encouraging residents who do not have the time or money available to run for and serve on the council. A recognition that the job of an alder is a full-time job and should be compensated as a full-time job, also providing alders with the time and resources to serve their constituents and to develop and oversee major policy initiatives. There was a, the council then took that report and, as you know, approved a non-binding referendum, including four questions, to be on the spring election ballot last April. This is just the language from the resolution directing the staff to place the referendum questions on the ballot, and then to have the Task Force Implementation Work Group evaluate the results of the advisory referendum elections and take necessary steps to place a binding referendum question on the ballot in the spring of 2022. So that is why this is back before the council. The Implementation Work Group considered this and decided to forward that, really that task to the council to decide as a whole what the next steps would be. So here's some information about the four referendum questions. The first one asked residents whether Madison should have a full-time council with a suggested pay range, and that was defeated 58% to 42%. The second question asked whether the size of the council should be changed. I guess I refer to this as the Goldilocks pie chart, I guess, the majority of residents voting to keep the size of the council the same. The referendum question asking whether alders should have four-year terms was defeated 55 to 45%. And finally, the question about term limits was supported 71% to 29%. Notably, the question asked if the council transitions to a full-time council, should alders be subject to a 12-year term limit? I'm not here to like interpret or analyze those referendum election results. You are all the elected officials and can decide what those results mean. Going back to the TFO's final report, these are the key recommendations, again, transitioning to a full-time council, reducing the size of the council to 10 members, increasing council member pay, increasing terms to four years, imposing 12-year term limits, increase council leadership positions to two-year terms if the council terms are increased to four years. Again, this was a recommendation that would take place at the election following redistricting, and that any changes to the size of the council or the terms of the members be made by charter ordinance. Those two directives are currently in the ordinances by virtue of previous charter ordinances, so they can only be changed by a charter ordinance, including a referendum. So for next steps, the council has, you know, any number of options at its disposal, but specifically, you know, the resolution directed the council to determine what to do with these referendum results. So the council could authorize a binding referendum on any of these topics, including a binding referendum on the questions that were contained in the advisory referendum election last spring. That would involve, first of all, determining whether or not the council wishes to hold the referendum, and then specifically what questions would be on the ballot, what the language of those questions would be. As I mentioned, the size of the council and the length of the terms, those are the items that do require referendum approval. There was, I think the TFO's report anticipated possibly having a referendum in the spring of 2022. That is certainly an option. For that to happen at the April election, the county clerk needs to have the language of the referendum 70 days prior to the April election. So that means by January 25, which is why we have a placeholder on your agenda for a possible resolution to be considered on January 18. for a possible resolution to be considered on January eighteenth. Another option is to have additional referendum questions on the ballot on next spring. As you know, there are no city elections this spring. On this spring ballot, alders will be up for election in 2023, as well as the term of the mayor. Under state statutes, these referendum questions can only be on a ballot for the April election, not on a November election ballot, which we will have this fall. Other options are for the council to determine if there are any other recommendations from the TFOGS final report regarding the structure of the council that that the council wants to direct the implementation task force or any other group to pursue. And then separate from those recommendations, if there are any additional directions to provide to the task force implementation work group pertaining to the structure of the common council. So that is the conclusion of this presentation. Unless there's any request to go back to look at slides, I can stop sharing my screen and I'd be happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Attorney Haas. We'll do questions then for Attorney Haas, starting with Alder Conklin.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Hi, Attorney Mike Haas. My question is, so if I'm understanding this correctly, all the referendum questions that were asked on the ballot were non binding. So if we wanted to go back and make them binded, do we have to put them on the ballot again for the vote for them to be official? Is that is that kind of what I'm understanding?
For the results to be binding, yes. I mean, you can consider the, you know, advisory referendum questions. I I kind of glossed over this, but advisory referendum questions are basically like a survey or a straw poll that you're taking the temperature of of the residents without any binding results.
Okay, so but from those results, we couldn't stick to anything from those results unless we put them back on the ballot again?
So for 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 the two items that require referendum approval, the size of the council and the length of the term, those things can only be changed if the voters approve them. The other items, you could take the results of the advisory referendum and interpret them however you want, and you can pass ordinances or resolutions to adopt changes, even if they contradict what the voters decided. So again, you're just you're just taking the temperature of the voters, but the council is not bound by those. So it is a good point that the council could act on some of those, many of those matters without going back to a referendum election if it chose chose to do so.
But the size and the full time, that that is off limits. We have to put that back onto the ballot?
If the council wants to proceed with either changing the size of the council or the length of the term, not the full time. That can be done. That can be done by council action.
Okay, okay, thank you. I think that's all my questions.
Thank you, Alder Alder Wihilehe.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Attorney Haas, could you please go back to the slide for the council size?
Oh, sure.
So.
So seventeen percent cho- this was a multiple choice question. Seventeen percent voted to reduce the size, thirteen percent to increase, and seventy percent to keep the size the same.
Okay, thank you. So my other question is, as you know, you explained earlier, when we have the 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 advisory referendum, the only item that are we are obligated to put back as a referendum is the size and the length. Is that correct?
If the council wishes to to have another referendum or if the council wishes to take any action on those two items, then it needs to go back to a referendum.
And the other question is, since the will of the power of the residency has spoken and they have laid out their preference, we could just do nothing about this, right? We don't have to put any referendum for that matter, and we would be okay, correct?
Correct. That is certainly an option.
Okay, and my final question is, since we are pushing to put this binary referendum in this April election, which is only school board and county, is that do we need to put the referendum when there's municipal election? Or it would go to any election?
It would need it would need to be on a ballot for an April election, which could be this year or next year or a future year. It cannot go on the ballot for a February election or an August or November election.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Thank you, Alder Alder Lemer.
Thank you. I have a question about, I guess, the benefits to having this on the ballot in April 2022 versus April 2023. It seems like, you know, there may be some natural benefits to having it in 2023 would give us time to have a communications and engagement plan so that folks have a deeper understanding of what they are going to be voting on and deciding. That may be a higher turnout election next year, and maybe we'll be in a more normal time even, who knows?
Alder, is there a question?
Yes, I'm just wondering if there are benefits to having this in 2022 instead of 2023.
Well, I will answer that in two ways. One is this, this is not really, there aren't any legal. You know, there's nothing, this is not real legal advice. I'll just give you this, my perspective, having been involved in elections as an election official. You're you're certainly correct. There are no city elections. You might surmise that people involved in city elections. You know, there will not be opportunities to vote on other city offices this spring. They might be more interested next year. As you mentioned, if the council is interested in doing any additional public information effort in resident engagement, there will be more time. You know, there are, there may be other benefits to having this, an election this year. If if the council believes that, you know, this is maybe still on the minds of folks, then it's better to have it closer to that election. So these are all really policy considerations, and I'm sure there are more that that you and your colleagues can consider when you get to discussion.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Are there any other questions for Attorney Haas or any other staff? All right, then, on item sixty two, President Abbas, a motion?
The motion will be adopted. Right? I'm not sure.
It's a place to start.
Yes.
I guess that's right. It's actually just a discussion. So perhaps we don't need a motion, and perhaps the discussion leads to a motion. So we'll we'll just proceed with discussion then. So on on the question of the results of the advisory referendum and determining whether to move forward with a binding referendum, Alder Furman.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to do my best to actually, believe it or not, try to keep my opinion on this to myself for for at least the beginning of this discussion, because I do have some strong opinions. I just wanted to make a few very quick points. You know, I I heard from a task force member that made it clear to me, and and you can see that in the resolution that we adopted. The this council did tell the task force that we would have a binding resolution, a binding question on the ballot, regardless of the advisory. And so just just to keep in mind that that that's in that resolution, that doesn't mean we have to do that, but that is something that the task force was expecting. Not necessarily my position, and again, I'll share more of my opinion in a little bit. But Attorney Haas left out, I think, a point on on why there may be a benefit to putting this on 2022 or the goal of having this figured out as soon as possible, which is the results could then affect what happens in 2023 election. So, for example, if we're going to change the size of the council in the 2023 election, that that size change would take effect then, or the longer term would take effect then, opposed to then having to wait till 2025 for for that change. And so that's just something to keep in mind. You know, I think ideally, the goal would have been to have something binding in 2021 and have given us a a much longer time to redistrict, knowing what the size looked like, et cetera. But I think there was really big questions about what the language should look like. And and I think there were various, there were concerns of TFOGS members, and and then that was amplified by the council on, did people want a bigger council, a smaller council, or or stay the same? And we certainly got some opinion on that on the ballot. So some things to keep in mind, but I am very interested in what people's opinions are this evening. Obviously, you know, ballot question in 2022 or 2023 is certainly an option. I do think that the the report speaks loudly about issues with the council structure. And so if we're not going to do a ballot question or change the structure, what are some other things we can do? We talked about that in the implementation work group. I'm sure some members will share some of the things that we we talked about in the work group here of of alternative ways to possibly deal with that. And then, you know, we as a work group, obviously, if there are more things you want us to be looking into or working on, we're more than happy to take direction. So I'm hopeful we have a good chat about that this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder Furman. President Abbas.
Thank you very much. I will also try to be brief, and I also have a strong opinion as well. With this TFOGS, I also want to mention during Attorney Haas' presentation, if we read reports, a lot of those recommendations about four years, full time, part time, it was not unanimously approved. So there was concern within the TFOGS members about keeping, if we bring a full time and with paying eighty percent in county income, I think so you can read, there, there's a lot of information on that report. There was many concern about making it more professional, like legislative body of state of Wisconsin, and et cetera, and et cetera. Couple of things I will I will say is, you know, as a not my Aldermanic district and the north side of Madison, the majority of the residents, they voted against the ideas about the full time, idea about reducing to ten. And hearing their voices, and now me as an alder, if I go and say, hey, I heard your voice, but guess what? I'm going to do a binding referendum anyway. I know you guys voted down those ideas, but I'm not going to listen to you guys, and I'm going to move forward with the full time. I I do think it looks really bad in public domain, and it looks like we are not listening our constituents and their voices. Second concern I have is with 2022 is moving forward in 2022, it's a school board election and county, a lot of cities are un- seats are uncontested. Going through a pandemic voter turnout, I'm not sure how the voter turnout is going to be. People are not really engaged with city council elections are more, where people are more engaged. And if you know, last time we had many seats for content content state, and we have primaries in many seats and and general election, and it's also going to be a mayoral election, so I think so. If this body decide regardless, I'm not in a favor of putting binding referendum, but let's say for sake of argument, if majority decide they still want to bring that in front of the citizens of Madison, then I would suggest do it in 2023 where politically everybody's engaged and you have a higher voter turnout, so everybody's voice get heard rather than doing in 2022. And also in 2022, another concern I have, if you look into really deep down, look into those numbers beside big percentage, fifty eight, forty two percent in various question, there's a various percentage. Is Smith area have a higher amount of voter turnout? And also, Is Smith basically voted fifty two percent, fifty one percent, if I'm not wrong, that area won full time, full time a common council. And I think so it was a forty eight person, very close in Monroe District. I'm again recalling my memory. I don't have data in front of me. And if we, these are the districts are also Farmer District, Dedar, which is older. Whatever district is really high voter turnout there too. So then that was also close. If we're going to put in 2022, these higher people who engage a lot, and mostly those people are privileged people rather than people of color, I do think so it might really be harmful for us to put this in 2022. And I I understand what Alder Furman is coming from, and I completely get that. But just for sake of clarity about giving opportunity to broader communities, very important to to think about it while we're making such an important decision for our common council. Thanks.
Thank you, Alder Alder Bennett.
I have to agree with Alder Abbas in that when, and also some of which Alder Lemer stated in her question. During the election cycle, like right around the end of our election, I was receiving like tons of calls or when I was calling people with phone banking, of people asking what is, what are these questions that I'm just now seeing on the ballot? And people didn't even really know what they were voting for one way or the other. So I don't know even if the results that we just saw are completely accurate to what people may think if they had more time to fully comprehend what they were voting on in these advisory referendum questions. And I'm not convinced that that outreach can be done between now and the April election. Furthermore, I have to admit that, like, as a young person, as and as a student alder, as a student, I'm extremely against the the push to have four year terms and to go full time, just as a full time student and knowing like how these operations work, it's going to be extremely difficult for any student or young person to run, be able to run for an election, let alone serve on council. So in even in that vein, this election is for a, for not even for councils, for school board and issues in which only a select number of people are actually going to be voting in that election. And it's not representative of those that want to that understand like council issues that we're facing. And so all that stated, I believe that I understand, I I understand the push to go to 2022. It's like, and we're very excited about these changes, and maybe they could happen in 2023. However, these are changes that are going to be long lasting. We don't need to be forcing this through. We can take our time with it, make sure that we have enough public outreach so that people really understand the issues that they're voting on and how they would like their council to look like.
Thank you, Alder Alder Conklin.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. You know, I think I I'm definitely voting for or pushing for, I should say, that we try to get this on the ballot as soon as possible. I think 2022 would be a great year to put this on the ballot because, for one, I think this goes to show you how important it is to look at a full time council and how to look at longer terms because as we seen this come in, when we all came in, all the newbies came in in 2021. And if you're talking about pushing it out further until 2023, when our terms end, we may not be able to see the end result. And I think that that's where a lot of problems are going to come in at with only a two year term, if we don't run a four year term, especially concurrent with the mayor, you know, like she has or he has the same people, start with them to end with them, I think is very important. But not only that, too, being a single mother, raising my children, it's definitely important that we get paid accordingly because that we get paid accordingly, because many people, like Alder Bennett said, you know, many people were asking us during our election, what were our thoughts and what were our ideas about this? And I really couldn't have any because I didn't sit on the, you know, I haven't sat at the table before. But now that I've had my seat at the table, in order for us to continue to represent Madison, Wisconsin, and have many different people who do not look alike sit amongst the same table, we have to be paid accordingly and 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 be able to take care of our children and be able to, you know, keep a roof over our head and have our basic needs met. You know, everyone wants their basic needs met. But if the people trying to represent them aren't having our own basic need met, it makes it very difficult. So I mean, I I'm really hoping that the rest of the council will see the benefits of having this on the ballot as soon as possible in April, this April, and, you know, I'm gonna yield the rest of my time. So thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Harrington McKinney.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm not, I I'm looking at the four questions and the percentages for those questions. Yes, the way we all are, but I'm really looking at what's before us in 2022, if it goes on the ballot, and what might be before us in 2023, if it goes on the ballot. This council has voted to stay virtual because of COVID and the reoccurring, a new strain. And and so what we're talking about, and I'm a, I'm a chief inspector. And when COVID first hit, I looked at individuals coming into the center to vote. I mean, they were masked, the clerk made adjustments. But I'm not really sure of these two things. One, I'm not sure what the turnout will be. The comfort level in voting, and you can always say, well, they can vote absentee, but I'm not really sure about what that turnout. But more importantly, I'm not, people are still trying to figure out redistricting. I mean, we're in the middle of that. But the other thing that really concerns me is what has been the engagement to have constituents, have voters better informed about what's before them? There's been no, no concerted effort to really educate people. Some people, yes, they get it, they understand. But what is, what has happened to make a more informed public from now to, which we're in January? And from January to to April, what is it going to, what's going to happen to make a better informed voter so that they'll understand what the options were? And so that's what, that's really what my, my, my challenge is, more so than having it binding or not binding. I think rushing through it, I mean, as the alder said, this is, and I, I mean, it's not gonna affect me at all, but this is a very serious consideration when we're talking about it. And to make that serious consideration in a month and a half or whatever, just doesn't seem to do justice. And so I'm really struggling with it. Thank you. I'm complete.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Heck.
Thank you, Mayor. I guess I'll start by saying I agree with parts of what most other alders have had to say. I I'll say personally, I was greatly disappointed in the results of the advisory referendum, but not surprised. And I hope that we'll continue to work on all of these issues. I think they're really important. I I would, I I'd be surprised if any alders were surprised at the results of that advisory referendum. I think we kind of saw it coming, although, as I said, I was very disappointed by it. And I I just wanted to remind everyone that if we put questions on the ballot in 2022 or 2023, they don't have to be these same questions. They could be, we, you know, do you agree that we should declare blue is green and orange is yellow? We can do whatever we want. They don't, we don't have to use the same language. We can go after different parts of of TFOG's recommendations, even related to city council makeup. We can tweak the language in any way we want. But the key, I think, is is what we just heard too, what Alder Harrington McKinney had to say, you know, we, there's just a ton of education to do before I think we can have a successful. And by successful, I don't necessarily mean what I want, a successful referendum where we have quite a few voters that are educated on what they're voting on. Thanks.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Carter.
Thank you, Mayor. I just have two question, well, I have one question. I don't know if Attorney Haas is is around, but if this, if if we put it on the ballot in April for 2023, when does it go into effect? And if he's around, he can answer that. My second comment.
But Alder, let's deal with that first. I believe I believe the answer is that you would include an effective date.
Okay.
But Attorney Haas can contradict me.
Okay. The other thing I think we, oh, there he is.
The answer is yes.
Oh, okay.
You would include an effective date in the language.
Okay, great. My other concern is I think the the desire to go full time and get a salary of close to, what, sixty seven thousand a year is tempting. However, I think we need to look at the fact of, and that's if we go full time, and and I think it's four years. But I think we have to also look at if you don't get reelected, how quickly can you get another job here in Madison? It might not be an issue. It's not an issue for me, but it might be an issue for some. So as we sit up here and say, we'll have more diversity, we will have longer terms, term limits to, I should say term, to get things done, we can better engage our district, we can do all these good things. We have to look at the entire picture. And and I think Alder Bennett made some good points. And Alder McKinney and Alder Conklin. I think we've all making good points, but I want to make sure that we see the broader picture because we might not be sitting here. It might be someone else. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder Carter. Alder Benford.
Thank you, Mayor. Hope you're doing well. Oh, gosh, there's so much running through my mind with this conversation. What a way to start off 2023 here. So I'm I'm a little
Twenty-two still.
Oh, my gosh.
Don't skip a year on us, Alder.
I don't remember what I had for breakfast, Mayor, so I'm slipping. So I want to say I'm conflicted, Mayor, because I recognize that countless hours were devoted to this issue by the TFOG committee. I thought I saw in Attorney Haas' presentation where over ninety meetings took place. So there was so much time and energy. But Mayor, what guides my thinking about this? I don't know what your screen is set up like, but as I look at all the faces, it looks like a postage stamp of beautiful, diverse folks from really vastly different backgrounds. So isn't this the most diverse council in Madison's history? I think it is. It was way more diverse when I now than when I served the last time. So if the intent is to bring diverse voices to the common council, you know what, Mayor? It appears to me that we don't need to attempt artificially restructure this council. But you know, with that said, I think that there's some TFOG recommendations, or if we look at the conclusions of the elections that I can get behind. And I want to say to my colleague, Mayor, if I may, Alder Conklin, I'm deeply sensitive, and I can definitely relate. When I served last time, I was a single father of five or four at the time, working low income jobs and having to work sometimes two full time jobs and serve as an alder. So when I look at the election results, I guess the clearest thing, I'm not a pollster or anything like that, but folks want term limits. They want term limits. So we could spin it and say they only wanted it if we went full time. But for me, I think there's value in term limits. I don't want to go through everything, all the considerations. But I personally believe that a true leadership requires that each and every one of us cultivate and make room for other leaders. They said that they want the council size to stay the same. I I agree. I I certainly agree. And I once again say all of this, recognizing that so much work was done by this committee. They said nope to four years. I don't necessarily agree with that. I think that, you know, you serve one year. You try to do your due diligence to do the good work, and then boom, all of a sudden, you're in election mode. How do you get reelected? I think four years would give continuity, but some people would counter and say that if you're a really sucky alder, we're stuck with you for four years. So maybe two years isn't so bad. Now, once again, if we're talking about representation, you know, if we're really, if I'm really being honest, I certainly understand that some folks might have more privilege, or they might just have more time. And how they serve their district, that's really up to the voters. Every election, that becomes apparent, and the people decide who they want. So I I think as we talk about, do we put something on the ballot this next spring? It's not soup yet. There's just so many considerations that we have to think about. And I think there's something about, I'm I'm still, once again, very sensitive to how do we support more diverse voices with lived experiences serving on this body? So I think if we had more time, maybe we could talk about middle ground. Maybe if someone was at X amount of the poverty level, they were really struggling to keep a roof, to put food. We we want to maybe think of a way, a decent pay. So there could be other questions as we talked about in our conversations that could be on a future ballot, on a future referendum. So with that, I don't think there's any mad rush to do anything right away. If I, once again, and being totally honest, in the past, I believed in term limits. And you can argue once again that that's what elections are all about. But it's just my personal opinion that as I think about restructuring the council, I think sometimes what's missing, and as I look at this screen and see all these faces, I think we got it. I think we're we're diverse. There's ways that people are running, new BIPOC people are running, and I think that's very powerful. So I don't think we need artificially do anything. And then when I, one last thing, Mayor, if I may, when I think of a full time alder person, and I think of what's gonna happen during these elections. So if we really want diversity, if we really want live people with lived experiences, I think it's disingenuous to think that you're going to be able to mount a campaign or raise the type of money that a ten council, ten member council would dictate. So I would be very cautious about that. And then after twelve years, if there was these term limits, you're like, oops, I'm gonna jump back into another profession. That's not how the world really works, I don't think. So there's a lot we have to consider. But I really appreciate this conversation, but I don't think there's a rush to do anything in 2022. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Evers.
Thank you, Mayor. I I recall, was it a year ago, we were having this discussion? And we were, we were discussing whether or not we were gonna have a referendum and debating whether that referendum would be advisory or whether it would be binding. And I supported an advisory referendum at the time, but I recall that we had made a promise to ourselves and to the public, and I think to the TFOG task force, that we would follow up at some point with a binding referendum, that we would not use the results of the advisory referendum as a way of dismissing the concerns that were discussed. And I I think this item isn't so much for us to debate the the recommendations of TFOG, but really whether or not we're gonna move forward with what we promised the public we would do. We were gonna use the advisory referendum to help shape the questions for a binding referendum and put it to the voters. Now, what I, whether I think, whether I'm in favor of a full time or or a part time council, whether I agree with the recommendations and the rationale and the logic of the TFOG committee and the and the product of ninety meetings over two years or or not, isn't really the issue. The issue is, are we gonna follow through with what we said we were gonna do? And I do think that there is a problem that an advisory referendum does not get the same attention, nor the same level engagement, because it doesn't have the same level of urgency as a binding referendum would have. That said, I do think we've run out of time, and that's partly due to COVID, and perhaps it's become, it's also because council itself is not a full time operation with a with a chief of staff prepared to be able to keep everything on track. This slipped through our hands, and it's in many ways too late for us to mount a binding referendum for this spring for many of the reasons that have been mentioned. But I I just want to remind this body that I believe we have promised the task force, and we pretty much promised the public that at some point we would turn this over to the voters and do a binding referendum. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Wieland.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think, I don't want to repeat what other alders have said. And but I think Alder Benford said it well. And you know, one thing I want to add is, as elected officials, we are elected to hear the voices of our community. Our community spoke. They have given us an indication that they don't want any changes, with the exception of the term limit. And the the result is very conclusive. However, if we want to do something, and the question I ask Attorney Haas is, which items are more, that needs binary, binary referendum? And that was the sizes and the length. If we want to go with that, we can move forward with 2023 election where there's a city election, the mayoral election, we can get more turnout, people are coming. Because if we push now to April election, that means we are disregarding the voice of of our community, the voices that they guided us, that they don't want any changes. And speaking of diversity, Alder Benford said it well, that making the full time council will not increase the diversity. If we have only ten council members, you can imagine the limit that we can have for people to run for office. Secondly, if you think of the term limit for, you know, to increase the term limit to four years, what will happen to our student body who want to participate in this political process? What are we, we cannot be able to have them participate in that regard? So if an alder ever said that we owe to the community and we owe to the body, that we promised them to give a binary referendum, and if that's the way we want to go by, I think we can do more outreach. We can educate our community if we want to modify the questions, if the if the questions were more confusing. But I think it's just misleading and it's unfair for us to rush something that's not fully baked to an election that will not have high turnout. So I will not be supporting any way to move forward. But if if it was my choice, I would say the will of the power has spoken, and we do nothing with this, except where we need to do the binary. except where we need to do the binary. But because we promised, we can move forward with 2023. So, thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Curry?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I hope to be brief in this, but I just wanted to share kind of perspectives. I agree with a lot of what my peers have said on both sides. Um, but in being respectful as being a new alder and knowing that, uh, some of the decisions were laid out or discussions started before some of us even thought, um, we were going to be campaigning or running for election, um, as well as engaging the public and having a non-binding question. And now, um, again, wanting to be informed by the public and by our constituents and those we represent, um, to uh, reflect what they would like to see. I guess my biggest observation or, uh, kind of laughing naively at myself when I was campaigning of what I thought I could accomplish. And now that I am in the role, um, uh, laughing a little bit at how naive I was. Um, but also the, the question in my mind is how do members of the public, how do folks interested in running for, uh, public office or those who didn't even know that that was their calling, have a true understanding of what the role is and what they are voting on? And honestly, until you've done the role, um, or been a long-serving volunteer, I think of multiple city processes and BCCs, um, that answer, well, I would say majority vary, um, based on that experience. And so, um, I would like to point to the fact of looking at our structures of BCCs and, um, knowing that we want to have a further diversification of lived experience, of identity, of culture, um, making processes to attend meetings and understand how to even serve on committees, more accessible to members of the public. So more of us are making an informed decision. And then I think, uh, alluding as well to staffing. Um, I believe those Alder Evers brought it up of not even having a chief of staff or having full office staff to get some of these things in terms of engagements with voters and making sure they understand what they're voting on. Um, so I understand both sides of the seat, but I think from my perspective as one of the newer alders, um, one more thing, I don't know council outside of virtual and I can't imagine trying to attend the amount of meetings that I've been able to via Zoom in person and I work downtown on the square, a walk away from the CCB. So again, making it accessible, uh, and if we are members of the council and saying that it's inaccessible for us and those we represent and those we think would be amazing leaders, um, that's the first focus in my mind to make sure that folks know what they're signing up for and know that there are inclusive and equitable accesses, um, ways to access those resources.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Halverson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, just looking at the resolution in front of us, it is asking to determine whether a binding refer- referendum um, election shall be authorized. And we're talking about 2022, it sounds like. Um, I think that this is a, is definitely a long-term, the only, the only two items according to the attorney that, that require binding are the, uh, length of service and the size. And those things, I think education is going to be key to the voters and make sure that we have enough awareness of what changes we're looking to make that are very long-term. So to try to do this, um, I agree with my colleague from uh, District 13 that we are out of time to even put together the questions that we would ask in order to get that binding. So I think we should take the time for the next 12 months and, and chew through this and get the right. If we're going to do this and put a binding referendum out there, we do it right. We do it on the 2023 when we know we're going to have, uh, more turnout. I think turnout will be a concern if we're trying to get the will of the people. Um, I think this needs to be deferred until 2023 if we're going to move, make that choice at this point. So, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Foster?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, it's been great to hear all the discussion and feedback. Um, I guess just to start out, I'll say I, I do not support putting any binding questions on the 2022 ballot. Um, I, a couple of things I wanted to, um, I wanted to speak to though, uh, I guess first, the, the concept that sort of the voters have spoken and we should, it would be somehow disrespectful to come back in the future with any similar same questions. I, I don't agree with that. And I think the purpose of the, um, of the non-binding referendum was to inform us. There was a lot of discussion about that when the previous council voted for this. And I, for one, am really appreciative that we did put these out there. I, I certainly learned something from the results. I think we need to be cautious to um, put too much stock in them, but I, I, there was definitely information to be gleaned from it. So I'm glad that we did it. Um, on the other hand, I also don't actually agree that we committed to the public, um, that we were going to come back and do a binding. Um, I just went back, but that the, the resolution that was passed and it, it pretty explicitly, it, the only thing that it committed to was that the task force would bring back something for the council to vote on. And if it were approved, then it would be placed on the ballot. So I think, and I, as one of the co-authors of that resolution, the intent was to do the, the non-binding, get information, review it, bring back the opportunity to, to go for a binding, uh, resolution. So I, I personally do not feel like we are in any way committed to doing that. And I think we should only do that if we think it's a good idea. Um, the other thing is that I think if there is interest in doing a binding referendum, which I think there are a couple of things I could support in the future, um, I do think 2023 would be a good year to do it. Um, it does, um, it's not as good as, uh, Alder Furman said in terms of being able to implement those changes with the new, uh, term. But it would be a mayoral, um, election year, which has, you know, I think about double the turnout as a regular sort of council election year and certainly much more than a, a county board and, um, school board election. So if, if part of the goal would be to have as many people as possible sharing their, their perspective, I think 23 would be a better opportunity for that. Um, and then briefly, I just wanted to kind of run through the four questions and what I gleaned from the results and what my thoughts are. Um, I, I do believe that for the question of the size of the council, uh, to me, that did seem pretty convincing. Um, and it, and it, I, I would not have, I guess, expected that or, or, um, so maybe it did surprise me that 70% said leave it alone and 15 on either side said change it this way or that way. But from my perspective, without any sort of new information, it doesn't make sense to me to just put that question back as is on a binding rever- um, referendum. So from my perspective, that, that one is sort of closed. Um, the question of full-time versus part-time, that was not, uh, quite the landslide, but still pretty convincing at 58, 42. Um, the interesting thing with that is that, you know, part of what I really appreciated about this non-binding referendum and part of the point was to generate public discussion about it. And there were, you know, a number of forums. There were some really good discussions on social media of all places. Um, there, there, you know, I, I heard actually from a fair number of constituents about it. Not as much as maybe I would have liked, but it, it, it did get these ideas in people's minds. And what I heard most on this issue was a real concern about sort of professional politicians and a, and a kind of association of full-time with professional. But then also I did hear from a lot of folks that they were supportive and would support increasing the salary of the council. They thought that it, for all of the work that was entailed, the current compensation really didn't make sense. So for, for me, for example, I'd really be interested in looking more into that. I'd love to survey current elders, maybe some, you know, recent elders and just start with figuring out how much time do we all spend? What do we all think is a reasonable amount of time, even just to share with future candidates? Because, you know, there's a range clearly. Some people spend more than others, but I think we should try and dial in what a, what a realistic minimum amount of commitment it is. And I think we should have a real conversation with compensation and we should not be doing this and not making a living wage. It's not a good example for us to set. And I, I just don't believe in, in principle. So that's one that I'd like to take a look at. But again, that doesn't require a binding referendum. So, you know, if, if others are interested, we could work on that through TFOGS and come up with something to, to potentially change that. And it might not even need to go to referendum. The question on term limits, um, in my mind, I was interpreting that as only if going to full-time. And so I did kind of discount the results of that, but I think Alder Benford makes a good point. Still a very high number. 75% said yes with that condition. But, you know, I feel pretty ambivalent on this one. And if we feel like a majority of folks do want term limits, even regardless of the full-time question, I'd be probably willing to support putting that on a, as a binding question and giving people the opportunity to, to weigh in. Uh, and then the, the last one is really around the four-year terms. Um, you know, of all of them, that was really the closest, 55, 45. Uh, you know, given everything we said about the challenges of getting to folks, you know, who is really weighing in, how much information do they have? Um, I think that one also is really worth some more work and possibly including on a 23 binding referendum. Um, and a big part of it for me is, uh, really based on my experience and coming in, you know, three years ago as part of almost, I think with almost half of the council turned over then. And then this, this most recent one, again, almost half. You know, I think 15 out of the 20 of us have less than three years of experience on here. And like, that's just not good. It's not good for us as an institution, um, really guiding this city. It just, there's not enough history and experience on this council and to have every two years potentially swapping out half of the, half the whole council, it's just really destructive. It's way too much to learn. You know, it literally does take a full year just to kind of get your feet under you. So I, I, I think that one needs to get looked at some more. Um, I think I'd also like to, to look at the question of staggering terms. That could also really help and not have such huge numbers of turnover. So we have a little bit more continuity. So, um, I think those are the two I just wanted to put out there and I'd be happy to work on those as part of the T-Fog's implementation team. Or I'm happy to work on those with others that are interested and, um, you know, possibly bringing something back to the council for a, a 2023, uh, referendum. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Furman?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm, I'm very appreciative of the discussion this evening. Um, I, I do want to apologize. Um, uh, we did try to get this meeting scheduled way, way sooner, um, than January and, and just struggled getting people's availability and finding people's times based on committees, et cetera. Um, and so I'm grateful we're having this discussion now, but recognize that makes 2022 incredibly difficult. Um, I do want to point out, uh, just some math that I was doing about 2023. You know, if we think we're lining up, uh, four-year terms with mayor's, uh, mayoral election, which is one of the things that has been talked about. And that means these changes wouldn't go in effect, uh, until 2027. Um, so it's, it's a, it would take a long time to figure, and, you know, uh, Alder Foster mentioned the idea of staggering, which I think is also an interesting concept to look at. Um, I do think the advantage to go, uh, putting these, the, uh, putting any sort of questions on the ballot in 2023, um, is the ability to give us a lot more time to educate people. Um, I'll never forget when, uh, uh, the Chair of TFOGS, Eileen Harrington came, came in front of the council in, in October um, to talk to us about the ballot, uh, the results and talk about the ballot referendum. Um, one of the things she, I believe she said, uh, it was two, it took her two years to finally decide after being involved in TFOGS, that full-time was a good idea. And the second I heard that, I already knew what the results were going to be on the ballot. Um, if it took somebody that was engaged in this work for as long as she was as Chair of the TFOGS, um, process, um, to, to, to realize, uh, the, the scope of this job um, and how important it is, uh, for, for it to be full-time, um, I, I knew that, that, that the education was going to be, um, impossible, uh, next to impossible. Um, I will say personally, I'm not sure I'm a fan of any, any ballot questions, um, whether it be in 2022 or 2023. I'm not sure we're going to get much radically different results. Um, I do greatly appreciate the stuff that Alder Foster said and do think there's an opportunity to really think hard about how we phrase it, which is what we were supposed to learn from the non-binding referendum. And I think there are things we can pick out and, and, and go with. Um, but I think, you know, one of the things that we made a mistake with, and I think, uh, Justice Castaneda said, did, said this really well, is I think we made a mistake saying, um, full-time because all of a sudden we got into this realm of professional politicians. I mean, I think the thing we should have been saying all along is should alders get paid for the time they spend on the job? Or is this just more or less a volunteer activity where we get a small, small amount of money as, as a thank you? Um, I, I think this work is too hard, um, too demanding. Um, and, and, and I think it's, it would be important, and I think it's important to compensate alders for their time. Um, I think one scenario I've had, had in mind is the idea of, you know, people at their work saying, okay, I'm, you know, can I make enough being alder and do 20% of my time as alder and 80% of my time in my job and take kind of a step back from my job and do part-time? I think there are different ways to think about that, um, but I do ultimately think our current salary um, really doesn't measure up to the amount of work we put into it. Um, you know, Alder Curry mentioned BCCs. Um, you're going to see a lot more from the implementation work group, uh, uh, early this year about that. Um, we, we have some, some ideas, um, that we'll be sharing on how to restructure our BCC system or figure out ways to restructure it. Um, but that is incredibly important to fix that. Um, I think the things that we've talked about at TFOGS Implementation Work Group is if we don't do this, um, what do we do, um, and try to address some of the other concerns that are in here? Um, and, and that could be everything, anything from, you know, possibly adding more support staff for council members. Um, that certainly comes at a cost and I know we have budget issues, um, but I desperately think we need to do a better job with training and make that training available um, to people in the community as well, if they're thinking about being alder. Um, right now, when you become alder, I mean, our, we, I, our orientation process has improved dramatically, um, uh, since it, you know, from, you know, this, this term was better than, than last term, but, but it's still incredibly hard. Um, you get thrown into a job and you get about two weeks and, and you just get thrown a ton of information night after night and you're just trying to take it all in. And so, you know, thoughts that we had talked about at the TFOGS, um, implementation work group is possibly starting those training sessions in January. Um, if you're a candidate for the position, what better way of learning more about the position you're running for than having a training session every two weeks? Um, and come into that training and you don't have committee meetings yet. And so hopefully you get an opportunity to learn stuff and you're not being thrown a ton of things very quickly. Um, then I also think we need to do a much better job of actually educating people, not just about how the city works, but how, how, how to, how to, how to do the job. Um, it requires a great deal of learning about facilitation and, and, you know, learning about dealing with residents' concerns. Um, I, you know, I, I, I mentioned in the implementation work group, I was at a neighborhood association meeting recently and, um, they, uh, they made me, uh, my, uh, I, I thought it was a mistake, but they made me the feature speaker for their annual meeting. And, uh, I know, you know, when I had first started, if that happened, I would have been incredibly nervous. Um, but I, I was much more prepared many years into this job, um, and, and was able to, you know, really do a good job of summarizing what was going on and then answering a lot of really random questions, um, that people had about different things that were going on. Um, I, I think it takes a while to get those skills. So I think, you know, teaching people, uh, you know, different ways to do that, I think is incredibly important. And there are ways we can do that better. Um, and I think that also ties into the term limit stuff. Um, two years is way too short. I think, you know, you really, really get the hang of this job, a year, year and a half and, um, possibly even two years at the end. And even then, you know, I'm still learning things all the time. Um, so, you know, I think, uh, you know, from my perspective, um, I, I do think 2022 was rushed. I think there are a lot of issues with doing something in 2023, including I'm not con, I'm not necessarily convinced we're going to hear um, anything radically different. Um, I do think it, it probably is a good idea to go forward with something in 2023 um, and, and be much more targeted about it. And I desperately do think we need to be looking at other ways to improve this job. Um, because it, it, you know, it may have a diverse amount of people that are involved, um, but it is not open to a diverse amount of people. It really isn't. Um, and I think, you know, um, it's, it's just, there, it, it requires a lot. And I don't think everybody's getting equal representation in every district because of how much it requires and how much resources people have to, to give this job the time it needs. So, um, those are my thoughts. Um, but I, I, again, I really want to say how appreciative I am of the discussion this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Um, I've Alder's Bennett and Figaro Cole in the queue. And then, uh, I'm going to try and bring us to some sort of conclusion or at least next step. Alder Bennett?
Thanks. I'll make this brief, but on, on the note of like next steps, I think that a lot of good points were brought up today and I don't want those to go unnoted. Um, especially those of which, um, talk about like the concerns of like, if we did go full-time or did go, um, for four-year terms, what are the implications of that? And how that will affect representation? One thing that wasn't brought up, but that I would like to say that I think it is important is there's this idea that somehow going to, um, four-year terms will make campaigning much easier since you don't have to campaign so often. However, I would argue that campaigning, um, I wouldn't say it would necessarily get easier just by looking at how much more it would cost to even run a campaign of that nature. Um, and I'm still, and from what Ald, Alder Furman just said, I, I'm, I guess now I'm like looking back and I'm kind of confused. Are you saying that like, um, if we go, that we're not going necessarily full-time, we're just going to increase our pay? Cause that's a lot different than, um, our, then our hours are going to increase or de- decrease from what they currently are. Um, and within the time that if we're not going to go for this ballot in 2022 to 2023, I would like, I would hope that um, TFOGS, if they haven't already, um, to address some of the issues that would come up. Um, if we did go to, um, full-time or four-year terms, um, um, particularly in terms of like representation and campaigning and, um, how much easier or more difficult campaigning, um, and representing constituents will become, um, if we make those changes.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Figaro Cole?
Thank you, Mayor. Actually, I was just going to ask you, eh, you know, what, what will be that the next steps on this discussion? Because I agree with um, many of the things said and disagree with many of the things said, um, um, likewise, but, um, there, um, I mean, there's so many, many, many valid points that I, I don't want to repeat. But one thing that I'm certain from my perspective is that regardless of, of if we are going to put this on the ballot or not, I just want to, I just want to have the option for this discussion not to be closed tonight. Like, there's so much that we can, we need to be doing in order to make this body better. And I, I, that's what I'm kind of, from the, from the perspective of process, what does that look like to leave the discussion to continue and address so many of the topics discussed here today? So that's kind of a question for you.
Yes. Thank you, Alder. Let me take advantage of your question to me, uh, to, to try and put a little structure around this. Um, we've, we've been fairly broad-ranging in our discussion, which I think is appropriate. Um, but, uh, ultimately, there's, there's some, I think, uh, sort of initial specific questions before you. Um, and let me start by saying that, um, the, the way to answer any of these questions, if you wanted, uh, the answer to be affirmative would be to make a motion. Um, I think some of the next steps don't require a motion and I, and I'll clarify, but I, I, I think really the pressing questions before you are whether you want to go to binding referendum. And specifically whether you want to go to binding referendum on the number of alders or the length of terms, because those are the two things that cannot be changed except through a binding referendum. And of course, you could go to referendum on other things. That's absolutely within your power. Um, it's not necessary, right? So that's the sort of first question. And if, if anybody wanted that to happen, um, you know, there's certainly, uh, you know, item seventy-four is on our agenda. Um, you could wait for that item or you could make a motion now, um, to say that it's the will of the body to do something. Um, the other i- important question is which election, if you want there to be a binding referendum, which ballot do you want it to be on, right? And that's something that, for obvious reasons, i- if you want it to be, uh, this April, you have to settle almost immediately, right? Um, if you want it to be at a future ballot, it's less urgent to settle which future ballot you might want that to be. Um, but the other question that's before you, which is in some ways perhaps the most important one, is what other action do you want to take coming out of that both the initial T-Fogs report and the results of the non-binding referendum and the work of the T-Fogs Implementation Group? Um, and that I think is actually where most of what I've heard tonight falls, right? And people have feelings one way or the other about whether or not there should be, uh, a, a referendum, uh, and when. Um, but I've heard e- each person that, that spoke, I've heard you talk about things that are, wouldn't have to be on the ballot. And, uh, and could fall into this category of other action. And, and that category, I would suggest, is really, um, has been to date the work of the T-Fogs Implementation Group. And it, so options for keeping this conversation going, one, if you're interested in engaging it, you could attend those meetings, uh, you could ask this president or a future president to appoint you um, to that group, uh, to work on it. Um, you could ask that body, um, uh, and/or council leadership to schedule a committee of the whole to discuss some subset of these issues. Uh, if you really want the whole council, um, to, to discuss them in more depth, I think i- if you wanted to do that, I'd really recommend working with the implementation group to structure that conversation. Um, but there's, it is, I think no way that this is the last discussion of these issues, right? I think in, in any scenario, the implementation group is going to continue to work on these issues. Um, and I, I think, and based on the reactions that I'm seeing from Alders Foster and Furman, that, uh, your input and, and in fact, input of every alder would be very much welcome um, into that conversation. Um, and I think there's been a number of, of good ideas that have been raised tonight. I'm sure they've been taking notes. Um, and that those, it notes and ideas will go back to that implementation work group, uh, for further discussion. So, so it's a very long way, Alder, of saying that this is definitely not the end of the conversation. Um, it's more the middle of it. Um, and that the, the questions that need to be settled tonight, I think, are mostly around um, the questions of the two binding referenda possibilities. Um, and that other, uh, issues, uh, can and should, and I believe will continue to be discussed. Does that answer your question, Alder?
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Alder. President Abbas?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, you, you put a nice, uh, direction for all of us. I appreciate that. Uh, so I, I, uh, really appreciate all the colleagues hearing from them. I do think so regarding question about the binding. Two question, full-time, part-time, I think so. There's a very clear direction. Uh, the community doesn't want full-time, uh, regarding term length. I think so. I agree with Alder Foster. There might be some creativity message. We should think about it. Perhaps we can take back to T-Fox Committee and then we could discuss about it more in detail if twenty twenty-three is our target. And that's what I'm thinking, I'm hearing from, uh, most of my colleague. And term limit, perhaps the, the T-Fox, uh, report mentioned four years. Maybe we can think creatively and put three years. Now, just, you know, safe for a- argument. Why not three years? Why four years? I also agree with many of my colleague. We, we just get elected and my personal experience also is pretty much similar, uh, longer than alders. The first year take you a lot of time to learn and then second year you spend six months and then you're busy running another campaign for next six months. So two years just passed really quickly and, uh, but it's, it's, it will be, it will be good to have at least more than two years, four, three, uh, however, we could discuss more about it. Uh, we should bring this back to the resident as a binding referendum about the term limit. Regarding full-time, part-time, uh, I, I don't feel comfortable as, as myself, bringing it back. Uh, regarding, um, other stuff, uh, I think so. I agree with my colleagues. There are many ways we could look into that. We could look into the paycheck, hours and have a broader discussion. Uh, I know last time, uh, Alder Furman reached out to council leadership. We did a try to do committee as a whole. We were not able to find time slot, but looking at the interest and comments from other orders, perhaps, uh, if T-Fox Group can reshape, uh, some question and discussion and we can give another try of committee as a whole and have us uh, only discussion around those topics and perhaps give some side of direction for next budget. How, what we want to do. So that's my two cents. Thank you.
Thank you, President Abbas. Alder Foster?
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to make a motion that the, uh, council charges the, uh, implementation work group to, uh, prepare a, a draft resolution authorizing, um, referendum questions for the twenty twenty-three uh, spring election, um, to bring back for the common council for discussion and a vote.
Uh, Alder, can you, do you want to specify the, which referendum?
I was, um, maybe if I can get a second, I could speak to why I didn't, um, specify that.
Uh, is there a second? Alder Furman will second. Go ahead, Alder.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Yeah, my thought was to basically leave it open. Um, I think let the, the task force, this feedback bring something that, you know, we think best represents what we heard tonight. And then obviously the council will have the, the complete authority to add things, delete things, change things, et cetera. But that, we would just do our best to try and put something uh, in front of the council as a starting point.
Thank you, Alder. So again, the motion is to instruct the T-Fogs Implementation Work Group to draft uh, referenda questions for the twenty twenty-three April ballot.
A, a resolution for the council to, to, to do that, right? So, you know, not, again, presupposing any of our opinions on whether we should ultimately do that or not, but just having that available. I, I think we would, I, I didn't want to put a date on it, but I, at least personally, my goal would be to do that somewhat quickly because I think we, you know, we don't want to be having the same quest, uh, discussion next January. So I think if we're gonna, we should discuss this, take a vote on it as soon as possible. And then if there is will to, to do it, then we'll have much more time to prepare.
Thank you, Alder. Uh, on the question then, Alder Furman?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I do, I do want to at least add, even if it's not in the motion, um, I think, uh, you know, as the, uh, the Chair of the T-Fox Implementation Work Group, I did, I did hear a lot of, uh, stuff and was certainly taking notes. And we will also be working on other things for the council to be talking about and thinking about, um, and try to come up with, you know, a bunch of different things, even though it's not in the motion, that is, that is certainly direction that we're hearing loud and clear. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Heck?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to, uh, say I strongly support this motion and I also wanted to thank the mayor for, uh, what she said earlier about attending T-Fogs, uh, working group, implementation group meetings and actually reading the materials. Uh, will, uh, you know, even the report, it's clear that alders have not read the T-Fogs report in, in, based on some of the remarks this evening. And, um, I, I think if, if folks can be prepared and come to some of those meetings or even watch the recordings or read the minutes, we'll avoid having this conversation in almost its exact same form in another six months or whenever this comes back. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Uh, Alder Wihilehe?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, a question, uh, for Alder Foster is there are a referendum for twenty twenty-three preparation. Are we focusing on just the two that we could, we should have as a binary? Or we are looking into the whole structure or those four questions?
Uh, Alder, I think that, um, that was my question as well. And I think Alder Foster clarified that, um, he's specifically not specifying whi- which questions it would be, but rather, um, the instruction, assuming the motion is adopted, the instruction would be from the council to the work group to take into account this conversation, um, and draft a resolution that would come back to the council um, for approval. And that they would have to have the, the conversation about which questions, uh, would be included.
I, yeah, I understand, but my struggle is if we are, if we are trying to create the whole referendum, or that's my, my struggle in understanding. And perhaps maybe Alder Foster can clarify that, because I, I would not feel comfortable uh, voting for this, knowing that we are going to, um, structure those questions, the four questions again. If, if it's two questions that is needed for us to have the binary, then I understand, but I don't want to lump sum the other, uh, questions. That's what I'm coming from.
Uh, thank you, Alder, for clarifying. And, and certainly Alder Foster can speak if he wishes, but, um, I think if that's your concern, um, at this point, I'd recommend voting against the resolution. Uh, the resolution is, is purposely nonspecific. Um, so if you feel like you need to know what the questions would be before you could support that, um, then I, I would vote again, against it at this point. And, and depending on the outcome, you'd be free to offer another motion.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Figaro Cole?
Yeah, I just want to thank, um, um, Alder Foster and, and Furman and even you for, for the clarification earlier, but that's exactly what I was looking. I just want the conversation to continue and I think the T-Fogs is the right place for it. So I am in total support of the, of that, um, proposal.
Thank you, Alder. Is there any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, then, just to clarify, it's been moved and seconded to, uh, and Alder, I'm not going to get the words exactly right, but to instruct the T-Fogs Implementation Work Group to draft a resolution um, that would approve referenda questions for the twenty twenty-three ballot. And that's the motion before us. So all those in favor, aye. Those opposed, no. Uh, as your name is called, and I'll ask the clerk to please call the roll. Alder Halverson?
Aye.
Aye. Alder Harrington McKinney?
No.
No. Alder Heck?
Aye.
Aye. Alder Limer?
Aye.
Aye. Vice President Martin?
Aye.
Aye. Alder Mayazi, absent. Alder Revere?
Aye.
Aye. Alder Vedavir?
Aye.
Aye. Alder Wihalee?
No.
No. President Abbas?
Aye.
Aye. Alder Aboras has left. Alder Benford? Is that, and I? Aye. Alder Bennett?
Aye.
Aye. Alder Carter?
No.
No. Alder Conklin?
Aye.
Aye. Alder Curry?
Aye.
Aye. Alder Evers?
Aye.
Aye. Alder Figaro Cole?
Aye.
Aye. Alder Foster?
Aye.
Aye. Alder Furman?
Aye.
Aye.
Madam Mayor, I have fifteen ayes and three noes.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. With fifteen ayes, um, that resolution or motion passes. Um, and we'll ask the work group to bring us back something. Um, and I'll just encourage, uh, all to engage in those conversations at the work group level. Um, I think, uh, uh, not just on the referenda, but on, uh, all of the above. Um, all right. So that brings us back to item forty-seven. And give me a moment to get the correct pages and screens in front of me. So item forty-seven is, uh, Legisstar six eight zero eight four, adopting the South Madison Plan as a supplement to the Comprehensive Plan and Directing Staff to implement the recommendations contained in the plan. Uh, we do perhaps, uh, still have registrants here. Um, our regi- the only registrant wishing to speak is Jim Winkle of District Thirteen in support.
Hi, um, I have two comments about the South Madison Plan. The first is an improvement to the Thorsted Concept Area and the second is about density along John Nolan Corridor. So the goal of creating housing as a means of community wealth building in the Thorsted area is a good one. I understand how the racist policies of the past have gotten us here today and I'd like us to try to right those wrongs. Um, my wife and I are regular donors to the OWN program, which helps especially black folks purchase homes. So with respect to the plan, I'd like to offer, I'd like us to offer more housing in the Thorsted area so that more people can benefit from wealth building through homeownership. This is a really unique opportunity we have. I can't think of any other place this close to bus lines and downtown where we could create so much relatively affordable housing. How do we do that? Um, plan for more townhouses, row houses and condos and fewer single-family homes. I have a friend who lived in a great neighborhood in Chicago, filled with affordable four-story condos and apartments. And there are many nearby amenities, a grocery store, library, hardware store, entertainment, community gardens, many restaurants. community gardens, many restaurants, and mass transit galore, all within walking distance. We always found a parking spot on the street when we visited, and that speaks to how few residents even bother to own a car. There's just simply no need. So related to that, Todd Littman is a respected urban planner who writes about smart growth. Here's a almost direct quote regarding transportation costs. Quote, "Studies found that households in transit-oriented and smart-growth neighborhoods own fewer vehicles and generate fewer trips than they would in automobile-dependent sprawled areas, providing large savings. Analysis of travel survey data indicates that central-city households spend about a third as much on motor vehicle repair as suburban residents." So these savings are partly offset by additional transit expenditures, but still result in thousands of dollars in average net savings. These savings increase one's disposable income, especially for low-income households," end quote. So transportation is a significant part of one's budget, as we all know. And that's really why I'd like us to encourage more relatively affordable housing in this area so we don't push people further out where they have no choice but to rely on a car, which costs money. Park Street is a major corridor with most of the amenities I mentioned above, with the exception of great transit service. However, Bus Rabbit Transit is coming, and that'll help. This is going to be a really desirable area in which to live. I live just north of the planning area, and as people are priced out of my area, some will look a little further south into the South Madison area, which will become gentrified if we don't provide enough housing for all. It's actually already happening. The law of supply and demand is a real thing, and it crosses economic boundaries. The city just passed zoning changes to encourage a missing middle in housing. So I say, let's plan for more of that. And even higher density makes sense to me, too. Second, and very briefly, I support the proposed density along and near the John Nolan Corridor. Thanks.
That's time. Thank you. We also have Helen Kitchell of District 13 in opposition available to answer questions, and Justice Castaneda of District 15, neither supporting or opposing, but available to answer questions. Are there questions for any of our registrants? Alder Evers?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I'd like to ask Justice Castaneda a question. Is Justice?
Give Justice a moment to get in.
I think I'm on. Can you hear me?
Yep. Yes, thank you for joining us. Go ahead, Alder.
Yes, Justice, you're as the Executive Director of Commonwealth Development. Have you been paying, following along with the work that's going into the South Madison Plan?
I mean, I don't know that in the past, professional capacity, I've done that. I've been very involved in a number of other capacities.
You're familiar with it, correct?
Absolutely.
Great. Do you have some thoughts about the Thorstad Concept Area relative to the issue of appropriate levels of density and the issue of transit-oriented development that the previous speaker, Jim Winkle, referred to?
Oh, okay. So there was a lot that was said, right? I mean, I think, one thing I can speak to is the homeownership concept. And like, there's a, the history of homeownership as an institution is not one of just, you know, having people get into homes and therefore they got wealth. There was an institution that included a number of racist practices, and, you know, many, even the servicemen's, or the original GI Bill, government-backed homeownership loans, which were used specifically to target areas that had restricted covenants, racist lending practices. I mean, there's a number of things that happened that made homeownership more about exclusion for folks of color than it was about a way or a path. And so despite the history, there is still this kind of thinking that like, we need to create more homeownership, which will then therefore lead to wealth, which doesn't hold by itself. And so I think that that's really important. However, there's a number of things that the previous speaker brought up, and I think are right, right? Like, having a number of different types of housing, I think, is really important. I personally, and I, you know, different day, we can get into it. But I don't think that this housing of all types thing holds up because of a lot of the spatial segregation in Madison. However, focusing on density, especially with your lowest-income units having access to transit, I think, is really, really smart. Wherever you guys have an opportunity to do that, we should be doing it all over Madison, but definitely on the South Side. So I don't know if that's specific enough of what you meant. I mean, there was a lot, I mean, the previous speaker said a lot of things that I think are absolutely true. I guess when you have an opportunity to create density with low-income housing, I always take back the concept of low income. I think it's really important that we're doing that, we're very deliberate about doing it, especially in areas like Park Street Corridor.
Well, thank you, Justice. Thanks. Thanks for being there. And thank you for all the work you do in our community.
I appreciate you doing it.
Thank you, Alder. Are there other questions for any of our registrants? All right. If not, then, President Abbas, let's start with a motion, and then we have a staff presentation.
Move motion to adopt.
Second.
Moved and seconded to adopt. And we'll start with a presentation from Jeff Greger from Planning, and go from there. Jeff?
Thank you, Mayor. So I just want to give a brief overview of the South Madison Plan. It's a lot more than just the Thorstad site. So just for everyone's benefit, hopefully, I'll spend five or six minutes going over it, and then we can get into more specifics. So just for everyone's reference, the planning area is the area south of Winger Creek, generally north of the Belt Line, west of Lake Manona, and east of Fish Atree Road. The plan focus, there are three guiding principles of anti-displacement, gentrification, community wealth building, and opportunities to thrive. Those three general principles or guiding principles were used to evaluate the plan recommendations and strategies. And those were arrived at through a robust community participation process. We had over 20 public meetings. It was a mix of in-person and virtual due to COVID. But we held our typical open-house-style meeting, worked with some neighborhood partners to put together neighborhood action teams that met four times. And those were made up of folks who don't typically engage in city processes. We also held art walk and talk, a bike and talk. And two social practice artists were hired, again, to reach out to those segments of the South Madison community that don't typically participate in these planning processes. The plan is made up of these five chapters, economic development, housing, land use, transportation, and parks, equitable access and capacity building, and then the Park Street Corridor. I'm not going to go through this whole list, but these are some of the top issues and concerns that were brought up through that, the the planning process. And, you know, gentrification displacement is by far probably the issue that we talked about the most throughout this process. But we also talked about affordable quality childcare, improving the pet-bike infrastructure, improving the parks, as well as transit service. I just have a series of maps that I'm going to flip through rather quickly here, but we can come back, circle back, and talk more in depth about some of these recommendations. We have a future land use map. Generally, these changes on the the land use map outlined in black are in response to a recommendation within the plan or one of the focus area concepts. There are a few in here that are kind of cleanup from the comp plan, like Badger Rock Middle School going from general commercial to special institutional. We do have a zoning map. I just wanted to point out that the plan does not recommend any proactive rezoning of city properties. However, with the Town of Madison coming in, attaching to the City of Madison in October of this year, the plan does make zoning recommendations for those town parcels, similar to how other attachments of other towns have gone. A similar process was used to arrive at at these recommendations. The plan has a height, maximum building height map to help guide development, when and if it does occur. And it is reflective of, again, the community input that we heard. We're also showing priority street connections. Connectivity was another big issue that that we talked about. So we're highlighting here three priority street connections within the plan, and then some additional secondary. These relate more towards the focus area concept plans, which I'll get to in a minute. Also, as I mentioned earlier, in in the top issues and concerns, pet-bike infrastructure. So we're showing some additional path connections, additional on-street connections in the plan, as well as we looked at gaps in the sidewalk network in relation to access to transit lines, both current and the future BRT. I mentioned, we, the plan has three focus areas, concept focus areas. And so the plan looks at Village on Park area, the Thorstad focus area, and then the Perry and Anne Street focus area. Just going to quickly go through these. So the, this is the Park Street focus area. We're looking at both sides of Park Street, showing new street connections, so an extension of Buick Street, extension of Fisher Street and Hughes Place, reflecting the changes at the Village on Park with the Urban Leagues Hub project. And then some other aspirational-type recommendations for the block south of Hughes. One of the items brought up during the planning process was the need for more park space, especially at Penn Park. So this concept shows a potential, a way to expand Penn Park in the future. Moving on to the Thorstad site, or Thorstad focus area, it is much larger than just the Thorstad property. There's recommendations for mixed-use buildings along Park Street, along the future BRT route. And then I'll get into the, more into this recommendation of a new neighborhood at the Thorstad site in a minute. The final focus area was Perry and Anne Street. Again, focusing on connectivity with overpass connection of Perry Street over the Belt Line, connecting the north side to the south side. There are a lot of employment opportunities south of the Belt Line. And this recommendation is making more of a direct connection to those jobs from the the neighborhood to the north, as well as creating some additional street connections within this neighborhood, while offering up some opportunities for employment along the Belt Line and Anne Street, and then transitioning back into the neighborhood with some low-medium residential and medium residential. I mentioned the Thorstad focus area. Get into that recommendation a little bit more. This has been the number-one discussed recommendation through the boards committees and commission process. So I'll go through a few more slides about how we arrived at this, and then kind of break down what the, what is actually in the concept. So this is what the community said, or told planning staff through these public meetings, what we've heard through the process. So displacement and gentrification is occurring today in South Madison. There needs to be owner-occupied housing, build something that people can purchase. There's been decades of neglect, redlining, and frankly, discrimination in South Madison, asking why all the housing units have to be rental units in South Madison. South Madison residents are already surrounded by rental apartments, the desire to build affordable housing. And then the last one is the hope the city takes into consideration South Madison is a neighborhood where we should focus on ownership because of the the history and legacy of housing discrimination against Black and Brown folks, and the desire that South Park Street not look like East Washington. So what does the data tell us? In South Madison, approximately 20% is ownership, 79% rental. Whereas the City of Madison is closer to that 50/50. It's 53% rent or 47% ownership. These pie chart data comes from the ACS five-year survey. As far as the breakdown of housing types in South Madison, it's 29% single-family, 67.5% multifamily. We did break out the mobile home from the single-family. There is a significant amount of mobile homes in the South Madison study area. Whereas the City of Madison, it's, again, closer to that 50/50, 52% single-family, 47% multifamily. During the planning effort, the city hired a marketing, or a market study consultant. And as part of their work, they put together a housing demand. They used two methodologies to look at how much, how many housing units South Madison could absorb over a 20-year period. Their methodology one was using kind of a high-low projected units based off a proportional share of the housing units in South Madison, based off of growth projected citywide. And that methodology, methodology shows between 924 and 1847 units. Methodology two compared South Madison to a comparable area that was experiencing growth, and they chose East Washington. With that methodology, they felt, or they, in their judgment, South Madison could absorb about 2,260 units. Within just the three focus area concepts, staff is estimating around 2,127 units could be realized at buildout of those concepts. And then looking at other potential redevelopment areas within South Madison, another 600 to 800 units could be realized. Some of those areas would be along the John Nolan, Olin Triangle area, as well as some other areas along Badger Road. Just want to also point out, the South Madison study area is 975 acres. Of that, the Thorstad site comprises 24 acres. So that's about 2.46% of the study area. And that's within that red outline that is on the concept plan that I showed on the previous slide. And Thorstad of the entire city makes up 0.04% of of the entire city of Madison. So we are talking about a fairly small area of of the overall study area when we're talking about the Thorstad site. This map is showing a percentage of single-family home by Census Track. If you exclude the downtown and campus area, South Madison comes in at 24%. And if you exclude that, the downtown area and campus area, it's relatively a low percentage of single-family housing as compared to other parts of the city, where near 75, 80, 83%. So how did staff arrive at this plan recommendation? This is not where we started. Staff put together an initial set of concepts that proposed 4,000-plus new units of housing. And those concepts were skewing heavily towards multifamily as the predominant form of housing. So that, those initial set of concepts comprised about 3% single-family with 97% multifamily. The revised concepts, which are the ones that are in the South Madison, the draft South Madison Plan, those revised concepts, 11% is single-family, and 89% of the housing proposed is multifamily. We had an initial set of meetings in June where we had three concepts for each of the focus areas with different levels of disruption or redevelopment proposed in those concepts. And again, those were the initial set with, that were skewing heavily towards multifamily. The community took a look at those and directed staff to go back and revise the concepts to show more owner-occupied housing. And and for your reference, those meetings were recorded. They were virtual. They're, they're on the media site for public viewing, in case you you want to go back and look at those. So based on that input from the community, staff evaluated a number of locations where additional owner-occupied input from the community, staff evaluated a number of locations where additional owner occupied housing could be developed. And to be able to do it in any way, shape or form, there would be, need to be a significant amount of city investment, likely TIF required to make this happen. The Thorstad site was chosen for a few reasons. It would not displace any residents. There would be minimal displacement of businesses. When staff ran the numbers, it was determined that a city TIF investment could likely be recouped within a 10-year period. And that'll, and the Thorstad location is adjacent to a school and city parks, ideal for developing a neighborhood. So what's in the concept? I guess I want to first and foremost say this is a concept. It's not set in stone with any of our plans that the city, that planning puts together. There is some flexibility on the makeup of these plans, the ratio, number of units, that sort of thing. Also want to mention, we are showing a variety of different housing type options here. We are, the concept plan does show single-family lots. In this concept, those single-family lots are 4,000 square feet. The concept's also showing cottage homes, which are smaller homes. You know, somewhere 1,000 to 1,200, maybe a couple are a little bit larger. Where they would be owner occupied, but they would be, the land would be more in a condo-type situation. And then also showing townhomes, owner occupied townhomes. As well as apartment buildings along Park Street. So there is a mix of housing types. This is one suggestion of the makeup of that. But depending on when or if this gets developed, the housing, the market may determine that the ratios need to be switched up a bit. And that is possible with what you see here in the concept plan. So the overall net density of this Thorstad focus area concept is roughly, you know, 16.01 units per acre. And that's net density, that's taking out parks, stormwater and right away. So again, the overall site is just under 24 acres. And yeah, I guess I just want to reiterate again, this is a concept plan, there's flexibility. The takeaway is there is a variety of housing options within this concept. So with that, I will be available to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Jeff. Are there questions for staff on this? President Abbas.
Jeff, thank you very much. Very exciting plan. Just looking at the plan, I think so we should do the same for the north side of Madison too. But there's a lot of opportunities, so really well done. Could you please, I saw Alder Evers send an email and he also mentioned about certain changes in the plan. Could you please explain how the plan is different than yours, which area? Just visually, if you can bring that slide back.
Sure.
Where you have 23 acres, I believe that's.
Yep.
Yeah.
So where, so this is the plan that's currently in the South, draft South Madison plan. The alternate plan that Alder Evers is proposing has a few modifications. One, so going back to the height map, the height map shows a maximum of five stories for this area. So these purple buildings would max out at five stories in the the, the concept you're seeing here. In the alternative plan, the height map would need to be changed for this area to allow for eight stories that would allow more units within these purple apartment buildings or mixed-use buildings. The other way it differs is the townhomes that are proposed here are made smaller. These are fairly generous sized townhomes of around 2,200 to 2,400 square feet. In the alternative plan, the size of the townhome unit would be about 1,500 square feet. So the size of these townhomes would go down. Townhomes would be proposed as a transition from the taller eight-story mixed-use buildings to the single-family lots. So these single-family lots would go away and be replaced with townhomes at that 1,500 square foot unit size. And then the last change in the alternate plan is these 4,000 square foot single-family lots would be reduced to 3,000 square feet. Netting us actually some additional single-family lots by reducing the size of the lot. But in essence, that's the difference between the draft plan and the alternative.
And then.
President Abbas, let me just point out that we don't actually have a motion before us on that and and so we will have an opportunity to come back and ask additional questions for staff, assuming a motion is made.
Okay. I can make a motion to adopt this.
We've got a motion to adopt on the floor, but we're still on questions for staff.
Alright.
And so just assuming that there will be an amendment, a motion for an amendment made, just letting you know that we'll have a chance to come back. So I don't, certainly if you have other questions, you should go ahead.
Alright, no worries. I will then wait.
Thank you, President Abbas. Alder Carter, questions for staff on the plan?
Yes, Jeff, what is the Thorstad adjoining properties zone for right now?
I believe the land use is employment and there would be some some sort of zoning regarding employment. If you give me a second, I can switch back to the zoning map and give you a better answer. So Thorstad property, which is this, is zone CCT. And then the properties behind it are zoned IL. So I believe that's light industrial. And then the land, the current land uses, well, the land use in the comp plan shows this entire area for regional mixed use. To make the concept come to fruition, the recommendation, the plan is to change the area in the black outline from RMU to an area of low, medium residential and then an area of low residential.
And currently, we do not own the land, correct?
Correct, correct. It's under private ownership.
Okay, thank you.
You, Alder, Alder Wihila, hey, questions?
Yes, Madam Mayor, thank you. If you go back to the pie chart comparing the renters and homeowners.
I'll get there.
There you go. So my question is, if this plan is adapted, will any of those ratio change?
They will likely change, but I don't believe in a hugely significant way. Again, the, the three concepts are showing, you know, additional 11%. When you add up all the units that the three concepts are proposing, it's only 11% of the units would be single-family. And then when you add that to the existing housing stack that's there, your percentage will go down a little bit. You may see the needle move a few percentage points, I would imagine, at, you know, once everything's built out. But again, this is a fairly small area when you consider the overall study area. But, you know, this was a community-led plan and the community loud and clearly expressed the desire for having more ownership opportunities. And it was also loud and clear that they would like to have single-family detached ownership opportunities.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alder, Alder Heck, questions?
Thank you, Mary. Yes, Jeff, you may have just answered my question, but on the slide that you spent some time on where the original concept was 4,000 housing units and then evolved from there, you spent a lot of time talking about that desire for more multifamily, I mean, less multifamily housing, but and you also spent a lot of time talking about home ownership desires primarily. And it seems like in the discussion, a lot of times those are used interchangeably, single-family with owner occupied. Is it true that, you know, in your opinion, that residents were really asking for single-family homes? Or were they really asking for home ownership opportunities? Therefore, it could include multifamily residences that were owner occupied, like townhouses or condos of various types?
I'm going to say yes to both. We've heard feedback generally that we'd like more ownership opportunities. When we presented these concepts to the neighborhood, those initial concepts showed opportunities for owner occupancy through townhomes and row homes, as well as apartment buildings. And at those June sessions, and again, those are recorded, you know, you can take my word for it, but you can also go, go look at those and listen to them. It was very clear to me and the other staff on the team that they were also specifically looking for single-family detached opportunities in South Madison. It's kind of two-pronged. They, the community asked to preserve what's there today because a lot of those homes are getting bought up and converted over to rental. And the other, other ask was to create more opportunities for single-family residential detached homes.
And did you, did you hear some support for the idea of condos, townhouses, even though you may have eliminated some of those?
So, I mean, yes, we heard positive feedback on townhomes and condos. We've also heard from the development community that it's still very, very difficult to get financing for condos. And so, you know, then the option becomes townhomes and row homes. And as I mentioned, when I was going over the concept, we are showing townhomes. We're not showing this all as townhomes. But again, this is one idea, you know? And these ratios could change. This whole block could be townhomes. And some of these cottage homes could migrate over here and you end up with fewer single-family lots. It really depends on when this is developed and the current state of the housing market. So, you know, again, for me, the takeaway is this is a concept and it's showing a variety of housing. And there is flexibility within this concept to change those ratios when we get more of a detailed plan in front of us.
Thanks. And just one, just one more quick related question. Because you're forecasting perhaps the usage of TIF or other city financing for this area, it's true that it won't necessarily be only market forces that determine the type of housing. The city will have a little more say than, than what would be the case if it were purely private development, right?
Correct. Yep. And for a private developer to do something like this, it doesn't pencil out. You know, it's going to require city investment, it's going to likely require partnering with a nonprofit to be able to do something like this.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Evers, questions?
Yes, Mary. Real quick, and Alder Heck kind of asked my question for me, and that is that if we're, if we recognize that the investment in this concept area, creating this neighborhood is going to require a tremendous amount of investment. It'll be very costly. It'll be a market intervention using TIF and the Affordable Housing Fund and other strategies. We have, do we have another example in South Madison, say in the Village on Park area, where it's been determined that we can create home ownership with a different building form than single-family? I seem to recall the CDA is doing just that in Village on Park. Could you talk just briefly about that?
Sure. Let me bring up that concept real quick here. So, I mean, again, in this concept, we're showing, so this is the northern side of the Village on Park site. So this low, medium residential, that likely could be a townhome. This is a medium residential, a two-to-five story building. This could have some sort of home ownership possibility in it. I believe the idea is the CDA would, it would be a CDA project. And, you know, the exact format of the makeup of that building, I think is still up for discussion, but that has been an idea that's been floated is to create more owner occupied housing on the northern portion of the Village on Park site.
So in other words, through land banking and through the city's potential ownership of the property, we could have a say in how the, how the, you know, what kinds of building forms and housing forms get built. And if we want to emphasize that there be some single-family housing, but also some other duplexes, triplexes, townhomes, townhouses, row homes, those kinds of things, the city actually can work with a nonprofit developer or even a for-profit developer and cast a vision forth and get a partner to do this, correct? We're not relying solely on a private developer telling us what to do.
Correct. Yeah, if the city's involved, the city can can put restrictions or requirements on how this gets developed, what type of housing, that sort of thing. Similar to other projects just to the north here on the Truman Olsen site.
Thanks, Jeff. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Carter, questions?
Yeah, Jeff, if you can show, when we had the community meetings, one of the things that the residents agreed on was the multifamily housing up at the villager and potential multifamily housing built by a private developer, which would be behind the villager, was the place to have that, correct?
Yeah, I think I'm understanding your question. You're talking about this area here.
Right.
And this area here. Yeah, so, I mean, you know, we did look at this area as an area potentially for similar to what is being proposed on the Thorstad site with some single-family or townhome and row home, owner occupied. The numbers didn't pencil out. There's a number of apartment, two-story apartment buildings already on that site. And, you know, when we brought this to the community, they, they felt, I guess, I would offer that they felt comfortable with this sort of type of idea for redevelopment of that apartment site. You could net additional units on this property, make more efficient use of the property in developing it as multifamily or medium density. Similar to, and they also like the idea of the CDA doing a project on the north side of their property.
And one of the things that throughout our community engagement meetings was really emphasizing having a variety of housing stock. Am I correct on that?
Correct, yep. Throughout this, you know, we, we explained, you know, the different types of housing stock and, you know, the need for a variety. And again, on Thorstad site, I would argue we are showing a variety of housing types. They may not be in the exact proportions right now, but again, that's, that is flexible. And so with South Madison being heavily multifamily right now, it makes it very difficult to pencil out a project where you could redevelop it into single-family. So So, again, that's why the Thorstad site was shown that way. Um, given the current uses today and, and, and any sort of viability that a project like that may, may have.
Thank you. Thank you, Alder. Alder Bennett, questions?
Hi, yes, so, um, I understand that many residents are hoping to, um. Purchase, um, detached housing, um, as you stated. Um, what is the, um, guarantee that the city, um, will provide that? If we put in single family housing, that'll actually serve the people of whom we are hoping it will serve.
So, I gue- I guess the, well, there are no guarantees in life, I guess that's a, a full cliche, but. Um, let me get to the concept here a little bit. Um, so the idea, again, uh, you know, to make this work, there would need to be hea- heavily. City involved, uh, with this, and as Alder Heck was getting at, um, and Alder Evers. The city would be able to. Dictates maybe a strong word, but dictate kind of the program here. Um, if we work with a nonprofit, if the city purchases the property. Puts in the infrastructure and hands it over to nonprofit, that nonprofit would be required to. Develop these homes at a, a certain, uh, uh. Level of, you know, a, a cost for the home and, you know, the city could say it needs to be, meet a certain affordability range. Um, so, I mean, that's, you know, really the guarantee that we have. Uh, within the housing chapter, uh, there are a number of strategies and recommendations that talk about. Perhaps a community land trust, uh, being, uh, used, uh, in, in a portion of the site. Uh, to also maintain affordability into the future. Um, so there are a number of recommendations, uh, in, in the, the housing chapter as well that, that could be used here as well. Look like Matt.
Yeah, I think, uh, Matt Walker wants to add something.
Um, I, I, I would just say, um, the most similar example we have of this is Mosaic Ridge, um, um, off of L.A. Drive. So that was a similar example where the city purchased land. And there was a desire for the neighborhood to, um, add back some single family homes with a specific. Goal of making sure that people who lived in the, the neighborhood had access to homeownership. And so we ran a year plus homeownership, um, a home buyer education program. Um, that was mostly made up of people who were renters in the neighborhood, um, to fix credit. Get them prepared, connect them to lenders and builders, and. We did have a number of people who were renters in the neighborhood buy, but as Jeff said, it's, it's not a, it's not a guarantee. Um, we can't, we can't say unless you, you know, rented in this neighborhood, you're not allowed to buy a house here, but. We can do things to sort of make it, to proactively encourage, offer, um, home buyer education, certain subsidies to. To sort of pave the, the way for people to, to buy in the neighborhood. So we have done it. We, we work with nonprofits to do similar things in other neighborhoods as well.
Um, has those programs helped increase, um, homeownerships of people of color? Cause that's, that's essentially what we're saying here is that like. We want black people to bla- buy these homes so that they can build generational wealth, which haven't had the opportunity to do so before. So.
So I'd say, like, so like, we can't run a city program that would, um, only allow certain, certain people, but we can, we. We have proactively marketed, we've been very successful at Mosaic Ridge, um, of selling houses to. Um, a wide variety of households from all sorts of income groups, races, um. It, it, we have been successful, again, through very kind of proactive marketing efforts.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Are there any other questions for staff? All right, I'm not seeing any. Um, so, uh, the motion is to adopt the plan. Um, we're on to discussion and Alder Evers, we'll start with you.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to move an amendment, uh, that I. The gist of which I sent out to colleagues and is posted on Legistar. And, uh, the amendment calls, uh, to swap out the original Thorsted focus area. And swap in the Thorsted focus area alternative. Which was articulated by staff in response to BCC input. And included in the presentation to the Plan Commission on December thirteenth. And secondly, to change the land use recommendations in the Thorsted focus area alternative. For sections A and B from low residential to low medium residential. Which will still allow for single family detached homes, but also allow for other building forms, including townhouses and row houses. And, uh, if there's a, a second on that, then I can speak to my.
Thank you, Alder. Is there a second? I think Alder Figaro Cole will second.
Well, thank you. Um, first of all, I want to say, as a co-sponsor for the South Madison Plan. For the adoption of the South Madison Plan, that I strongly support. The plan and believe it to be, uh, a tremendous. Uh, advance for this part of our city, this critical area of the city, but I do believe these modest changes. Uh, will make an, an important improvement, uh, and changes specifically to the Thorsted area. I note that in Jeff's presentation, he acknowledged that the comp plan. Uh, for the Thorsted area, just three years ago, when it, the comp plan was established. I'd recommended regional mixed use, which is the city's kind of highest, most dense, uh, classification. And that as a result of the South, now in the South Madison Plan, it's recommended in the Thorsted area. Low residential, which is a hundred and eighty degrees, uh, switch. Which is the reason why I and some others, in- including Alder Foster and several others in our community started to raise questions. If, uh, it just seemed like a very dramatic switch, particularly in such proximity. To, uh, South Park Street and, which will be a future, uh, Bus Rapid Transit line. Uh, the interesting thing about the alternative is that it actually increases. Opportunities for homeownership. It increases, in fact, the number of single family detached homes by, by eleven percent. It increases homeownership if you include, uh, the townhouses that have been stipulated for home ownership with those single family homes. It increases homeownership possibilities by thirty-two percent. And overall density is increased by sixty-six percent. But actually, as Jeff said, there's no reason why all of the units within the Thorsted area couldn't at some point. Be homeownership, uh, possibilities. Why is that? Because CDA is planning. To have an owner occupied affordable housing multifamily project that was just described, the northern section of the Village on Park. So, and the second part of my amendment, changing the low residential section of the Thorsted Concept. Area alternative to low medium. It would increase the low medium zone units significantly from forty-four to hundred and fifty-nine. But what that means is that while we could still have single family homes in this area. It would not be limited to single family detached homes, but we could also have the more townhouses, row homes. Duplexes, triplexes, uh, small apartment buildings, uh, those kinds of things that were, create more. Homeownership possibilities for more people. And I really think that's what we're talking about. Owner ownership, in fact, is the key and is the big advance in this plan. But we need to be careful not to make the mistake of conflating. Or making equal somehow or another homeownership with single family housing. There's no reason why we would want to limit ownership only to those who purchase a single family home. The key ques- question before us, why shouldn't we expand the option of affordable wealth building? To a greater number of our residents, particularly given the high cost. And the relative scarcity of public resources that we're gonna have available, particularly in, in these tough budget times. We've been told it's going to cost a lot to subsidize these units, so let's be efficient. Let's get more bang for our buck. It's indisputable, colleagues, that right now Madison is facing a profound housing crisis, a shortage of housing. And it will only get worse if we do not concentrate our efforts on expanding housing options. And increasing density in future neighborhoods like Thorsted. It's an opportunity for us to do something new. It's also indisputable that we are in a global climate crisis. Single family homes are less energy efficient than townhouses, for example. And if we are going to emphasize low density residential in Thorsted. That necessarily requires that we build more housing away from transit. And that will not help us meet our climate goals. A variety of affordable housing options and building forms, including single family, but also townhouses, row houses. Small to medium multifamily owner occupied apartment buildings. Would effectively combine the goals of resisting gentrification and displacement, which were articulated so much in the public engagement sections. And still allow for generational wealth building. In fact, it's a fallacy to, that single family homes in Thorsted in and of themselves will somehow stave off. Gentrification and displacement. Gentrification is related to affordability. And the plan recognizes once again that the Thorsted neighborhood, this project, this, this concept will require significant public investment. Investment that will be necessary to mitigate or push back. The deleterious impacts of a speculative real estate market where gentrification is. What happens when you have an opportunity to sell your home to the highest bidder? And you have more people wanting to do that and they take advantage of low, uh, more affordable areas, and suddenly you have. Uh, wealthier people moving into what was previously a low income neighborhood. We want to add density to this area to efficiently expand affordable housing ho- homeownership. To a greater number of South residents, South Madison residents, not, uh, not just a few, but as many as practically possible. Simply put, we would get more bang for our buck. By offering a greater variety of housing forms, and yes, there is some variety, but we should add a greater variety of housing forms. All geared towards affordable ownership. Staff recommendations for the original Thorsted Concept area. Do not jive with the direction the city is currently taking and embraced with transit oriented development. The plan recognizes. That transit oriented development is necessary for the success of Bus Rapid Transit. We know this. It's also essential for the success of brick and mortar retail along South Park. We know this as well. The plan knows and, and, and states that healthy re- a healthy retail mix. Makes for a walkable neighborhood, makes for a desirable place for residents to live. In other words, we need a requisite amount of density. For the success of BRT and for the future vitality of a neighborhood like Thorsted. I understand the need for homeownership as a means of generational wealth building. But it's not necessary that we wait, weigh this or weight it down in favor of single family homes, particularly. In direct proximity to the future BRT line. Um, I'll conclude by, um. Just reminding folks that we are, we are actually increasing single family housing with the alternative. We're increasing homeownership options, we're increasing density. And, um, I'm gonna wrap up, cause I, I wanna allow time for discussion, and I'll just, I'll just say this. I have a tremendous sympathy for the argument that racist policies in the past. Implemented by banks and allowed by our city have limited homeownership options, including single family homes. For black residents in South Madison. But as Jeff has said, and as, as Matt Walker has underscored, we are restricted. As far as the city's ability, and we're restricted by federal housing authority guidelines. On how we can explicitly redress, offer redress on the basis of race. But I do believe, and I would challenge all of us. A- in our role as policymakers, that with careful planning. We can and must embrace our shared values and policy priorities. Around racial equity, affordable housing and climate change. And it's imperative that we don't make the mistake of placing these values in opposition to each other, but instead work diligently. To harmonize them for the greatest extent possible. Racial equity, affordable housing and climate change are shared goals that we can, we should really emphasize. In, in the Thorsted Concept area and all our planning moving forward. So I encourage you to vote in favor of this amendment to make these modest changes and an otherwise very, uh, top-notch and excellent plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Um, we have a number of Alders in the queue, but because I did promise a chance to ask questions. Uh, on this proposed amendment, um, I'd like to turn to Director Stouter. Um, who I believe has a little bit more information, um, and open it up for questions for staff, and then we'll continue to take the cue. Um, if we have you there. There you are.
Yes. Thanks, Mayor. I will share screen and just show, um, a couple of visuals so that folks have a sense of. Uh, the impacts to the plan of the proposed amendment. Um, so in a sense, there would be, uh, three changes to the plan, all within the area of the Thorstad site. Which is shown here, so as, as Jeff, um, talked through before when looking at the draft plan components. Um, one change would involve the future land use recommendation. Uh, right now, as shown in the draft, it's largely a low residential designation, which is up to sixteen units an acre. Um, with a small area for low medium residential up in this corner here. Um, Alder Evers' amendment would, uh, change the future land use recommendation to that low medium residential. Which is up to thirty units per acre, um, for that entire site. Um, the second change then, um, this is, this is the Thorsted Focus Area Concept. Again, just a concept. That's shown in the plan today, as Jeff mentioned, it's about fifteen acres in size and developable area. Um, here shown are about two hundred and forty housing units. Um, with the amendment being brought forward by Alder Evers. Um, this is the alternative concept, and this was presented at the Plan Commission as well. This is, again, the same developable space of about fifteen acres and about four hundred housing units. And, and again, Jeff talked through this, pointing out the, the differences, but. Just, I wanna go back and forth one more time so that you have a sense of the, um, the, the change involved. Again, just for reference, these lots here are about four thousand square feet in size, single family lots. And if you scroll to the alternative concept, you can see that they're skinnied up a little bit. There, here there are three thousand square foot. Single family lots, um, and then there are, uh, you know, more townhomes in this area, taller buildings. Right up against South Park Street, et cetera. The third change and final change would be to the maximum building height map in the plan, and that would entail. Um, raising the maximum building height from five stories. Here, right, right south of Winger Creek on South Park Street, um, up to a maximum of eight stories in that same area. So I just wanted to be able to, to show those visuals in case they, they help address some of the questions that. That folks might, might have in advance, and I'll stop sharing there, and I think Jeff and I are, are still both available if there are other questions.
Thank you. Um, so we'll do questions for staff on this, uh, first, and I'll just go through, but. Uh, if you don't have a question, I will absolutely come back to you for discussion. So Alder Wihilehe, is it a question? Yes, go ahead.
Thank you, Heather. Could you please go back and explain the first two slides? I know you talked about. Uh, the stories changes, the length of the, uh, um, the, um, story, uh, from five to eight. But before that, yeah, right there. The first two slides.
Yes, yes, Alder. So the, this is the future land use map, which is a very general, um. Map that really sets the framework for what the future land uses can be, um, you know, all across the planning area. Um, shown here in this area that I'm, I'm showing now with my cursor. Is the, the reach of the Thorstad site, so this is at a different scale than the other maps. And it simply shows that right now, the draft plan recommends, um, largely low residential, this lightest yellow color. Um, and this is a mix of single family homes and, and townhomes, um, up to a, a maximum density of about sixteen units per acre. In this small corner up in the, up in the upper left corner here, shown as low medium residential or LMR. And that's a maximum of about thirty units per acre, so it can accommodate some small multifamily buildings. certainly townhomes and and as well as some single-family lots. Um, with Alder Evers' amendment, the Thorstad site as a whole would be shown in that slightly darker yellow color, the low-medium residential, which would, again, just set a different uh density framework for the expected long-term future land use within that area. So that's the first slide. And then, did you want me to go on to the concepts as well, the differences between them?
Yeah, before you do that, uh, in the other slide, light yellow, you talked about how many units per per acre, but with this dark orange, how many units per acre uh in term of the townhomes or apartments?
Sure. So so the general density range would be up to thirty units an acre um maximum within our low-medium residential density range.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. And then, uh, again, just moving on to the concepts so that you can see them visually. Um, this is, this is the draft plan as it stands uh today. Again, fifteen acres of developable land uh shown with about two hundred and forty housing units total in a mix of mix of housing types. And then the alternative concept, uh, on that same chunk of land, about fifteen acres of developable land, we have almost four hundred housing units um with still a a mix of types, townhomes, um, single-family. And and this would be uh again, up to an eight-story instead of a five-story building um along South Park Street in this area to achieve um some of that density increase. Does that get to your questions?
Yeah, thank you.
Sure, sure.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Carter, is it questions?
Thank you, Mayor. Heather, what does concept mean?
Thank you for asking that. I I think it is important, again, as Jeff mentioned, to reiterate that either one of these alternatives is just a concept at this point. You know, if the city already owned land, perhaps we would be able to go into greater detail um and and be more definitive about what the outcomes would be on a particular site. I think it's it's always a challenge for us as planners to try to make sure that the images shown in our plans and our city's adopted plans are meaningful to folks. And sometimes, the way to really illustrate what can be done is to come up with a a hypothetical concept that that can really um that I think people can actually connect with and have an understanding of what uh land uses could fit in with that general land use, a future land use recommendation. And so we we took a stab in in good faith uh as planners at laying out a a street network and a mix of housing types that um that reflected what we were hearing from the from the community. But either one of the concepts, whether what's in the draft plan today or the alternative um put forward by Alder Evers, I I do want to say that it it's very unlikely that the long-term ten, twenty-year land use would look exactly like either one of those. Um, and so we're, you know, I I think it's really important for the council to realize that the city may never see exactly what's shown in either one of those concepts, but both of them can be illustrative of what our general future land use recommendations are saying. And I think um, you know, the the one that's shown in the draft plan um was the one that uh was uh really clearly vetted most by many of the community members throughout the public engagement process. But they aren't far apart in the big picture. Um, they're 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 pretty close together.
Thank you. Thank you, Alder. Uh, President Abbas, is it a question?
Yes, please.
Go ahead.
So Director Stoudt, what is existing zoning there?
So the existing zoning in that area is industrial and uh commercial corridor transitional. So, you know, what what we're setting forth within this plan would be a very different future land use recommendation than what exists there today um in in zoning. Um, you know, in in the the mix of zoning districts that would really need to be implemented, to see this come to fruition, would be different than the underlying zoning that's there today. So similar to, you know, in the Oscar Meyer area within District Twelve, uh, the zoning that's there today is is industrial, industrial general, sort of our heaviest industrial district. Um, as you're really familiar with, you know, in order to see a lot of the recommendations of that plan achieved, the the underlying zoning will need to change in the future.
That makes sense. And, excuse me. And at the at the Plan Commission, Alder Heck make a slight amendment to the plan uh ad additional language. Could you please explain that? What was that?
Sure. Um, Alder Heck's amendment, which was uh recommended by the Plan Commissioners or by the Plan Commission as a whole, um, was a change to the narrative in the plan that acknowledged that, you know, the concept that's shown on the Thorstad site is flexible, and that as time passes, um, you know, this could take, again, this could take ten, twenty years to actually come to fruition. And as time passes, um, the exact nature of what's going to happen on that site is flexible. There may be a different mix of housing types that the the city would um be involved in um implementing in the future. And so the the amendment that that Alder Heck put forward at Plan Commission simply reflected that in the narrative of the plan. Um, but the Plan Commission also then considered the alternative concept, and in the end, uh, did not vote to put that forward as part of the plan, but rather to um to simply add some flexibility in the narrative. And Alder Heck can certainly follow with with more detail if he'd like to.
So what I'm understanding is with Alder Heck Amendment, and this is just a plan document, and when the real project will come, I think there is totally different dimension. We'll see the, uh, so there is flexibility in this plan.
There there is some flexibility in this plan, as with all of our plans. I think that that, you know, that the future land use recommendation of low residential or low-medium residential really does set a framework for what we expect to see there. But within either of those land use designations, we could see a variety of housing types, um, single-family lots, townhomes. Um, in the case of of low-medium residential, more of that small multifamily could be a a part of it as well.
Sure. And and last question is probably you or Matt Walker can answer that. It's about those condos and the concept of having condominium and owner-occupied condominium, like if cities involved in, have ever city involved in any condo projects? Or how how does that market is and how much? I'm just having a hard time understanding the city role in concept of condominium.
Sure. Uh, i- if Matt, if Matt is here and wants to take that, that would be.
Sure, so.
Okay.
Uh, um, off of Broadway, the CDA was involved with a large element where we were um, we we did a tax credit development. Um, and next to it, we also helped develop a a series of condominiums. This was largely sort of before the Great Recession, when it was easier to to finance condos. But we continued the project and and finished it in about twenty thirteen. So it's it's similar to any role where the CDA is the developer. So CDA developed Nolan's Apartments. We've done single-family homes, but we've also also done condominiums. And so acting as developer, we sold unit by unit, and then eventually we're no longer have any sort of ownership or control stake other than um financing tools or land restrictions that we would have left on it. Um, as as was mentioned um before, there there's nothing mechanically stopping us or or the market from developing condos. It's largely, uh, it's hard to get a bank loan to do condos at this time. It's just much easier to do apartments, um, given the lending environment. And then uh, there's also post-Great Recession additional restrictions that are put on the buyer side of condos and make it a little bit trickier. But there's ways around this, um, and we've worked with people to to purchase condos as well.
Mm-hmm. Well, that that makes a lot of sense. Thank you very much. And Heather, one last question about the size of the lots. Uh, three thousand square feet or four thousand or, you know, during community engagement process, uh, because there is in really large community engagement process happening quite a period of time. What was community input about single-family homes and and size of the lot is also interesting to me. What was their input as a community?
Well, I'll turn to Jeff if there were any specifics on that. I my my thought is that we didn't delve so much into the specifics of lot size. I I will say that um before before Jeff shines in here. You know, a three thousand square foot lot is the very smallest single-family lot that the city allows in any zoning district. It it's quite small. Um, I think a four thousand square foot lot, many might consider it also quite small, but it has a a little more room for things like detached garages, driveways, et et cetera. Um, I think with with the three thousand square foot lot, um, you know, Jeff put together some really great images shared with the Plan Commission of where some of those uh exist today, those very small lots. And if you imagine a lot of shared driveways or very skinny homes, um, you know, we're we're seeing that in older parts of the city as well as brand-new, um, you know, uh, examples on the edge uh of of very small, single-family lots. But they're still fairly rare a- as a whole in Madison. And Jeff, I I'll I'll turn to you to to see if there was any feedback or or input throughout the process on the the size of lot.
Yeah, so when we put the revised concept together, the one that um is in the plan, uh, we we did point out to the community that these were four thousand square foot lots. They're smaller, on on a smaller size as compared to your average city lot. Um, we really didn't get a whole lot of discussion about lot size. It was more important to the community that there be the option of single-family lots, whether they're four thousand square feet or ten thousand square feet. Um, we we picked that four thousand square foot number. Um, you know, knowing that this is in, you know, close to downtown. It it's along a transit corridor, trying to get a little bit more density in there, but also trying to have the ability to have single-family lots.
And and Heather, uh, regarding four thousand square feet, we recently passed ADU, um, you know, permitted use with four thousand. If somebody had nine thousand, nine hundred, not nine thousand, sorry, nine hundred square feet house, and if the surrounding boundaries is still, they can still construct ADU within four thousand square feet.
Yes, and they they also could on a three thousand square foot lot, if the buildings were small enough, you know, to to meet the lot coverage and open space requirements. But um, we, right now, um, with the recent passage of the accessory dwelling unit ordinance, there isn't any stipulation that your lot has to be a certain size in order to construct um an ADU.
Okay, that's fair enough. All right, thank you very much for answering questions.
Thank you, Alder. Um, let's see, Alder Bennett, is it questions? Go ahead.
Yes, questions, and then I'll come back later for comments. Um, I have a question, I guess for Heather. Um, so I understand that you were um explaining how the um, the images that we just saw uh might not be actually what we see later on, ten, twenty years from now. However, is it safe to say that, like, if we go with the current plan, that if if a developer were to come to um that neighborhood wishing to develop uh condos or townhomes, that it would be more difficult to change the plan after the fact so that they would be allowed to build such a development?
I I think it depends on the the scale and the extent of the project that you're describing. I I think it is very likely that the private market is not going to jump on this opportunity because of the cost of the infrastructure, the new streets, and the relatively low uh return on the investment. With, you know, this is not a twelve-story building on this large site. What we're showing is a a mix of relatively low-density housing types. Um, you know, that that um generally can support homeownership. Um, but I think behind the scenes, what we're really assuming is that in order for this to come to fruition or something similar to it, the city is going to have to take that initiative and be heavily involved in that development. And so, uh, you know, I think it is unlikely that a private sector developer would come in and want to do something exactly like what's shown in the concept. And I also think it's unlikely that they'd want to do something slightly more dense than what's shown, like like townhomes uh across the uh across the site. Um, we'd have to respond to that if it came forward. Uh, and we we certainly would, the Plan Commission and ultimately the council would would be involved in that decision. Um, I know that's that's a roundabout answer to your question, but I I think I I think it's, again, I I think it's unlikely that we'll see in the near term um a private development uh consistent enough with the plan in order to to support it as staff.
Mm-hmm. So like, either way, with this current or the alternate develop, you don't foresee developers looking to invest in that area? Um, and either way, the city would need to be heavily involved?
That that is the staff assumption at this point. I I think that the city would need to be involved um and and help to take the initiative to see either concept um come to fruition. And as I mentioned earlier, I think the the concept that's in the draft plan now is the one that was heavily vetted and and most embraced by uh those that that our staff team um were most involved with throughout the process.
Awesome, thank you.
Thanks, Alder. Alder Heck, questions?
Yes, uh, likely for Heather. Uh, Heather, you, we we've kind of mentioned a couple of times about uh whether or not a future proposal, let's say, conforms with with the plan. So in 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 particular, with regard to the like future land use map, there there are density ranges attached to each of those categories. And I I know there aren't really density recommendations any longer in the zoning code. Um, are are the density recommendations in the future land use map uh fungible? Um, you know, if if a, isn't it more about form than density? Um, in in with regards to the map, or is it is it both? So if if, you know, I I guess it's somewhat related to Alder Bennett's question. Um, if something were to be proposed that were higher density but vaguely the same building form, would that um be likely to be considered uh plan compliant?
It it could be. I think it depends on that magnitude of departure from the density ranges. And so, you know, you you're on the Plan Commission, you know that we face this about every two weeks with slight differences from um what adopted plans, um, underlying adopted plans say. I think that with within the low-medium residential and the low-residential um land use, future land use recommendations, um, there's a little bit less play. I mean, we we're expecting that those buildings are going to be one to three stories in height. Um, there's a lot more variation when you look at our mixed-use districts and our mixed-use land use recommendations, um, often because they they defer to a height map that that is in an adopted plan. Um, and so I, you know, we're really trying to lean more on height and less on density ranges for especially for our mixed-use a- areas. But for these low-medium and and uh low-residential areas, I I think it is pretty typical to see those density ranges adhered to and as developments move forward.
So the the boundary density wise between low residential and low-medium residential is a little bit firmer, but there's always room for play, maybe, is a good.
Yes, I I think that, yes, that's well said.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Miazze, questions?
Yeah, just a quick question for Heather. Um, have we ever done a demographic breakdown of um how many uh uh on the south side of Madison, how many uh people of color own, you know, as far as a single-family home versus a condo versus uh uh townhouse? Um, given that the study showed that a lot of people wanted single homes, which is different from uh townhouses. Just wondering if you guys had a breakdown of that?
No, we don't have a great breakdown by race and housing type and ownership versus versus rental for specific areas within the city. And that's because what we're really relying on is the census data or the annual American Community Survey data. It's just done uh based on a sample of of Madison residents across the city each year. So we have decent data, um, when you look citywide. But when you really dive into a smaller geography, the data gets gets really messy. Like, the margins of error on that data are so great that we can't count on it uh very well. But what we do have, um, and which Jeff showed in a slide, is is really just data on homeownership, period, for that area, and data on housing type, so single-family versus multifamily housing within South. So, single-family versus multifamily housing within South Madison. We we don't have a good breakdown um, by race within those categories.
Okay, I I just, I I guess it's a question and then just a comment to hopefully to go with it. But I think it's important and imperative as as uh, one of the things that um, that affects African-American communities, uh, to have their own house and have that ownership. So I I think it's important to actually have.
We're we're still in questions.
Okay, yeah, I I I just want to urge the city to actually have some kind of demographic breakdown, especially when the census is done. If we can get something in the near future, that would be nice. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Alder. Alder Carter, is it questions?
Yes, it's a question. Heather, how many um, neighborhood plans or um, area plans that you've done, I don't need the number of ones you've done, because I know you've done a lot. But from the point of adoption to the point of fruition, how many have stayed the same?
That's a great question. I I think it's a tough one to answer, Alder Carter, because so many of our sub-area plans are laying out ten, twenty, thirty-year framework for what the land use could be at at any one time. Now, there are some exceptions. Um, we've had some very small, geographically small plans um, that I've been able to experience coming to fruition during my time with the city, which is less than fifteen years. And and one example is the Royster Clark area. That was a a pretty dramatic change from an old fertilizer plant into a a, you know, a a neighborhood that is still developing. It's a mix of single-family homes and three-to-five-story mixed-use buildings so far. There's still room uh, room for more development within that plan area. Um, you know, another one that'll be interesting to to uh, to time, to to kind of measure over time is the Oscar Meyer special area plan, similarly a a major transition of that area. Um, if we look at our our regional malls, East Town and West Town both, I imagine that those plans will take decades to come to fruition. But on the, this this plan is really different because it's dealing with an area that's largely already developed, right? Like, like many of our other sub-area plans do, we're looking for the few opportunities for redevelopment within um, a broader area that's already a developed part of the city, or or in this particular case, the town coming into the city. So, you know, i- it's going to be a matter of decision-making on the part of hundreds, literally hundreds of different property owners as far as when 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 it's time for them to make a a decision about redevelopment over time. I think the Thorstad site specifically is a pretty unique site within this plan area because it's one that we do envision as a city, a pretty dramatic change for moving forward. And it has the acreage to um, to become something to, you know, significantly different. Um, but I, it it's really hard to guess on time because it, again, it's a collection of decisions of hundreds of individual property owners um, that that really uh, feeds into that overall timeline of of implementation of a plan.
And they might have their own ideas for their property.
Certainly, they they certainly will, and and market conditions will change over time as well.
All right, I see no additional questions for staff. So, thank you. Um, and now, uh, we're on the amendment, the Evers Amendment regarding the Thorstad uh, alternate. And I'm just gonna check through the hands that I saw raised uh, initially, and then we'll go on in the queue from there. Uh, Alder Wahila, hey, did you wish to discuss?
Yes, Madam Mayor, uh, I as I look at this and based on what has been discussed and knowing uh, South Side Madison, how it has been really neglected in terms of the black communities who live there. Uh, we talk about disparity, we talk about uh, how equity plays in the marginalized communities. And looking at the, what was presented in terms of the uh, the pie chart, that, you know, we have seen a lot of disparity. We've seen the uh, the rental uh, for the communities who are living in that uh, south side is seventy-nine percent uh, versus twenty-nine percent. And Madison, the rest of Madison is fifty, fif- forty-seven and uh, fifty. Uh, when it comes to homeownership or multifamily, it's sixty percent versus twenty-nine for South Side Madison. And uh, the rest of Madison is forty-seven, fifty-seven. So we are seeing those disparities. And we are policymakers and we keep on using the word equity, social justice, and how we can empower uh, black wealth or communities of color, how they can be able to build wealth, economic development, uh, affordable housing. We have to be true to ourselves when we say what we are saying. And as policymakers, we can't just have the cake and eat it. We can say something and then do something different. Uh, we've seen the units uh, that pro- was proposed is sixteen units versus thirty uh, units. Compared also is two hundred and forty units and four hundred uni- single units. So, we are trying to compact this marginalized community. We are not allowing them to have a space where they can raise their children, where they can be themselves instead of compacting them in a small area and not affording them for the wealth. You know, we're talking about climate change. How can we talk about climate change when they cannot even have bread on their, on their table? We are talking about, and I always look into the word, the words needs versus wants. We are talking about good for our backs or how the city can be more strategic in utilizing the funds for this community while we're just suppressing them, oppressing them. And we're not giving them the opportunity to be who they are, how they can raise their kids. Look at Souths- South Side Madison compared to Madison. It's unforgivable. And we're talking about climate change, we're talking about racial disparity. And we shouldn't be using those words if we don't really mean it. And it's really dis- heart- heartbreaking to see that, you know, we are thinking compacting them in one area and not affording them the homeownership that they really need. The community, it focus group and community outreach, they they spoke. And we have to listen to them. What is the use of us being a policymakers if we cannot be able to listen to the voice of those who really need us? So I I would encourage my colleagues to vote against this amendment by Alder Evers. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Uh, Alder Carter, you were next.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to urge my colleagues not to vote for the alternate. When I approached the residents in South Madison to participate in this community engagement, the response was, why should we? We participate and you guys do what you want. And we get nothing out of it. At every community meeting, I said, we need your opinion, we need to hear your voice, we need to know what you want, we need to know what you need. This is your opportunity, this is your time. At every meeting. The residents spoke. There's not an opportunity to buy homes in South Madison. Many of the homes have become rental and other homes have not left a family who owns it through inheritance. The opportunity to leave South Madison and go to to the peripheral cities and 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 suburban areas is greater than staying in South Madison. It is very important. If we want to gain and re- and gain and retain the trust of this community, is that we acknowledge that their participation was valid. That we acknowledge that their participation was valid. There was over twenty meetings where all different heights, types, genders came forth and gave their opinion. They wanted a variety of housing. And that is what the South Madison Plan shows, a variety of housing. Now, again, this is a concept. So we know as policymakers, ten years from now, because of the economy and other factors, we might not be able to do these concepts. We might get close. But this is what they said. Older residents wanted more senior housing. Younger residents wanted more single-family housing. That is what was said. And for some reason, we want to discredit what they said and their participation for everything else that we believe as we sit in our own houses, saying, you don't deserve the way you said you wanted it. Because we know better. That your participation was great and we appreciate it, but this is what we're gonna do. Me help you, help you. That's what it feels like. And this is what they predicted. And it saddens me because this is an area that every time we want to know what you want, we go to South Madison and survey the folks. Every time the university wants to get some data, they go to South Madison and survey the folks. And then what do they get out of it? Well, they get to participate in a survey. And if they say they want to have a dry cleaners, guess what? The dry cleaners never materialize. And I'm just using that as an example. We talk about equity. We talking about marginal communities. We talk about listening. But we don't listen. And, excuse my dog. We don't listen, but this is the time that I say, let's listen. Let's retain their trust. So that in the future, we can come back and we can say, we listened. And even in the concept, even, excuse me, even in the comprehension pla- plan of a few years ago, I remember one of the resident teams said that they wanted to know if we were gonna have, um, where was it that we were gonna put in an LGB QT community center? Well, that wasn't part of the comprehension plan, but guess what? We put it in the plan because we listened. And I think that's vitally important. What this plan is doing, the amendment, is not listening, is saying, we know best. Thank you for participating. And that's not what you do to a community. South Madison speaks five languages. It is the most diverse area in Madison. And let me be the first to say, it was the only place that African-Americans could go when they were ran out of green bush. The only place. And they've made it a community. They've made it a community for themselves. An area that nobody goes to. They might come to an event in Penn Park, but I haven't heard anyone say, we ate in South Madison. And that's okay. Until you bring up an amendment that says, thank you for your participation, but we know better. And I have to reflect on the fact that Thorstad is only three percent of this South Madison Plan. Only three percent of this South Madison Plan. And I'm, I'm not gonna give you the percentage, Alder Rahili did that already. But it made me think, as everyone was talking. Alder Conklin stated a few weeks ago, and I'm paraphrasing Alder Conklin, so you can correct me if you want. When the Odana Plan came up, she asked Heather Starter, this is just a concept, right? Heather's reply was yes. She came back and said, this is not a zoning change, correct? Heather Starter said yes, and the Odana Plan passed. This is no different. A vote for this amendment is telling the people, the residents of this great city that your opinion doesn't count. And that's what it is. When you bring up climate change and every other kind of change, which is vitally important to our existence, but you're telling them, your opinion doesn't count. And this property could turn into another car dealership, for all we know. But I want you to think about what you're going to tell the residents of South Madison. What you're going to tell the residents of District fourteen when you cast your vote. Because that vote is going to determine how we engage, how we retain their trust. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Bennett was next.
Well, I think that was really eloquently stated. Um, and um, inspiring. Um, nonetheless, um, there was a question asked about what we will say. And here is what I would say. I would say that I I truly do understand where you all are coming from on a personal and on a scholarly level. Um, coming from a, um, my dad's side on a black family, um, we are descendants of enslaved people. My grandfather did fight in World War Two and was not able to buy, um, use the FHA loans to purchase a home because he was locked out of that because he was black. And that's, and I can go through my family line and see how um, redlining and discrimination has affected my family and our economic well-being. Um, and this is really what led me to study these issues. So, um, no, I don't think that when UW comes in, they're just studying it just so that you can be a part of a survey. Is to fully understand these issues that we are facing. Is to fully understand these issues that we are facing, so that we can make the best policies to combat them. Um, in, even in my final project this year, I studied the. Redlining and urban renewal efforts that we have done in this city. Um, I actually sent you, um, one of the, um, studies that I used for this project. And I found the legacy of redlining, even just looking at that map, absolutely disgusting. It's absolutely disgusting, um, how. The redlining that took place in the late nineteen thirties affects us too today. How, um, the city failed in the Green Bush Urban Renewal Development. And how even today, black people are suffering from that. Uh, from a twenty eighteen study, black people of all economic levels are denied loans at double the rate as white people. Nonetheless, I find it disappointing that. The only. Homeowner o- ownership opportunities we as a community s- foresee. As us be- as being purchasable is the nineteen fifties white man's dream. Of having a single-family house with a white picket fence and a golden retriever running around the backyard. I don't understand how we think that buying in to that dream. Into that idea is the only way for us to experience economic growth. We've seen the dismal effects that single-family housing has had on the US as a whole. And on us in Madison. Housing stock is low. People in the black community like have literally almost zero to none opportunities by. Um, to rent affordable housing, to buy, um, affordable housing. It's just not there. And it's because of that white man's dream of their single-family housing. So yes, I understand, I truly, truly understand where we're coming from, why we want to build economic growth. But we need to come, we need to understand. How. Their dream impacts us. And how we need to combat that by sharing in our wealth. We can still own a home and have food on our table. And share a wall. We can s- we can buy condos, we can buy townhouses. We can share in our wealth. The white man's dream of a single-family house is not, is not the only way that we can build ourselves up. So. I see where we're coming from and how the idea that. Of, um, gentrification happening in this neighborhood and how. We see all these developers coming in and building all these grand luxury apartments up, um, how that. Contributes to gentrification. We're not saying that's what we want here. We're saying that people can have other opportunities and have. Um, more opportunities for homeownership. And this idea that we're completely ignoring the community to vote for this amendment. Runs under the assumption that all of the community input is dismissed. This ame- this alternate offers very, very mild changes. In which there will still be single-family housing opportunities for residents. Um, and it also engages with the. Understanding that we need to have more we- density and we need to share in our wealth. So I think that none of this can happen without the city making significant. Investments in home loans and other programs so that black people can get these homes. Um, and that also reminds me that. We are wanting to have these single-family homes in this community so that black people can own these homes. And there is still no guarantee that black people will be buying these homes. So. At the end of the day, I understand. Where residents are coming from. Nonetheless, I cannot support, um. Just funneling in a ton of single-family housing, knowing the issues that that has caused. With the legacy of redlining and how we need to combat that and how that this alternate addresses that.
Thank you, Alder. Uh, President Abbas, you were next.
No, I will skip that, looking at the time and the hand raised.
Thank you, President Abbas. Alder Herring McKinney.
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, I'm glad that there was someone speaking between, um, Alder Carter and my speaking. Um.
Oh, Alder, you've muted yourself.
I'm not gonna repeat it all the, that has been said before, but, um. I took a walkthrough of the new, um. A apartment building that Commonwealth built, uh, in the neighborhood of Metalwood. And when I walked through those apartments, I was simply, um, a- amazed. They were. They were large, they were spacious, they were beautifully decorated, they had huge closet spaces. The room you can walk through and peep and, um, and the the tenants. Loved that space. And one woman said, this is the first time that I've ever been the first person. In this space, and she loved it. Um, I I have heard of the, um. Five stories to eight stories and and I've heard all of that, but what I'm looking at is, um. Um, so I came from St. Louis, I, and we had Pruitt-Igoe and it was a building where. It was density and they stacked people on top of one another. I know we're talking about, um, a single-family dwelling. But I'm talking about the concept of packing people together, and that wa- that concerns me. Um. And I'm going to to read something that the, uh, that all Alders got. And it said, let's not undo the work that has been done. At least someone thinks that that came from me. That statement didn't come from me. That statement came from Dr. Ruben Athany. Who is the Director of the Urban League of Greater Madison. And he goes on to say, no planning process will be perfect, but when the process. Is diligent, a diligent one, one that expresses. The will of the neighborhoods and citizens. The plan should be supported. And so that's what I'm going to be su- I'm going to be supporting. Um, intellectually, we can prophesy and we can say everything that we wanna say. But in the bottom line is who is going to live. In these developments and these apartments whenever they go up, and if the people. Who took the surveys, who came to the public meetings, said that this is what I want. This is what we want. Who, w- why isn't that not workable? Why are we not listening to that? And that's the challenge that I have is is that. Um, and the Alders said it quite eloquently, is is that. When you ask people what you, what they want, they're not talking about redlining, all that historical things. Yes, it happened. Yes, it happened. But when you ask. Someone who has not even had the privilege of living in a, in a house or whatever. What is it that you want? And they express that and express that loudly. We should be liv- li- listening to that. Final, final, uh, comment is is that. When we, um, uh, built the Employment and Training Center. That's over across from Elba Park, um, Jim and his team. Came in and he asked the people what they want, wanted. We couldn't even get. Initially, we couldn't even get twenty or five people to show up in regular meetings. But when Jim and his team came and asked, what is it, what do you want this employment center to look like? And they believed that they would be listened to. They picked the colors, they picked the services, they picked all of those things. And over a hundred people in Park Edge, Park Ridge showed up. Every time that we had a community meeting because they were invested. They felt that they were listened to, and the Employment and Training Center as it is, too small. It was the result of the community saying, this is what we want. And so I would say to to colleagues, and I almost didn't speak as I. But but I need to say this, and however you vote is how you vote. If the people who will be occupying the space has said very clearly, this is what we need. If the planning staff has said that we listen to the people and this is the, this is the concept that we're coming up with. Why are we saying? Well, that sounds good, but we wanna put it, we wanna build more, we wanna expand it, we wanna do this, we wanna do that. So let's really start listening to the people.
Alder, you muted yourself again.
Thank you. I'm in. I'm I'm complete.
Alder Heck?
An action, yeah, thank you. Thank you. Sorry, Mayor, I think you disappeared briefly. Um, I have an amendment to offer. And if that's appropriate at this time.
Uh, Ald- Alder, just to clarify, is it a amendment to the amendment that's before us, or is it a?
It's an, uh, an amendment to the amendment that's before us.
I believe that is in order. I don't think we can get any farther than that though, so let's try it.
All right, uh, I'll offer that, and if I get a second, I'll explain. Um, I'd like to, uh. Change the amendment to only deal with the future land use map, yet retain the original. Uh, concept map that's in the plan.
Uh, is there a second? Alder Furman, is that a second? Yes, so moved by Alder Heck, seconded by Alder Furman. And and perhaps, uh, Director Stoudt, or you would do us the favor of. Bringing back the slides so that we can refer to them. And make sure that everybody understands what Alder Heck is proposing.
Okay, thank you, Heather. Uh, what I'm proposing is that, uh. The future land use map change from the version that's on the left, which is what is currently in the draft plan. And and changing it to low, medium residential throughout the entire Thorstad area. And as we just, uh, as we discussed earlier, that would allow, uh, more density. Uh, than if it were, uh, just low residential is on the left and and certainly Heather can add more if if that's appropriate.
Thank you, Alder Heck. I I do think it's, um, appropriate to see if staff wants to add anything and then if we have any questions for staff.
Sorry, I couldn't find my unmute button with the screen share. Shall I share that again?
Uh, up up to you, Heather. Did you wanna, uh, did you or Jeff wanna add anything? To clarify Alder Heck's amendment?
Um, uh, my understanding of it is that this, this then would be the change, would be basically from this. Light yellow to the the darker shade of yellow or the low, medium residential. So that would be changing the majority of the Thorstad site. From up to sixteen units per acre, um, raising that to a a range up to thirty units per acre. Allowing again for a mix of housing types to include, um. Anything ranging from single-family to, uh, small multifamily.
Thank you. Are there any questions about the, what the amendment is or its implications? Alder Curry?
I'm sorry, it may be the late hour, but how is that different than Alder Evers? I'm thoroughly confused.
I can answer. Uh, I'm, all I'm doing is, uh, changing the future land use map rather than both. Changing both the future land use map and the concept. Uh, that that second concept that Alder Evers was proposing, um, that, uh. Shrank the size of the single-family lots would no no longer be, uh, in play if this amendment were to pass. So the the concept map would be as it was originally presented. Yet the land use recommendation, uh, would change, and I can explain, uh. If if that makes sense. I can explain my motivation.
Uh, I think that's a request for you to explain.
Okay, thank you. Um, you know, I I offered an and a successful amendment at Plan Commission that was a text amendment. That essentially said, in this implement, plan's implementation, we should. Allow for flexibility in terms of density and the forms of buildings, but. After after the quest, a couple of questions that I asked tonight, uh, I heard of staff. I heard that the boundary between, uh. Low residential, future land use map, which is, uh, what's currently in the draft plan. And low medium, which is, uh, in Alder Evers' amendment and and what I'm proposing. It's it's a little bit firm, not not entirely, so Plan Commission has a little less discretion. To exercise when development proposals come forward. Uh, and and so, uh, if something that was. You know, I'm I'm just guessing, but it, let's say that a proposal came forward that was about twenty-five dwelling units. Per acre instead of fifteen, it's it's a little less likely that Plan Commission would say. Ah, we still think that's reasonable and we're gonna go for it. They, it's more likely they could say. We don't really think that meets the future land use recommendation. So. Uh, I think what my amendment will do is give additional flexibility to Plan Commission and staff as they consider future development. Yet it still retains the original, uh, concept map and and that is. You know, I think has been vetted more by the community, and so the goal is still the can't, the 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 concept map. That was originally presented rather than the one that Alder Evers was proposing. But it just gives more flexibility. So I think what I'm doing is extending what I did at Plan Commission with my text amendment. To changing the future land use map to give staff and Plan Commission more flexibility as. As in the future, as, uh, proposals come forward, whether it's through. Uh, city-owned land or city financing or even private developers, there'll be more flexibility again. So that's what my amendment is all about, if that makes sense.
Thank you, Alder. Is there discussion of the Heck Amendment? Alder Bennett.
I don't, I mean, I I this, I don't wanna ask a question directly to Patrick, because I know that's not allowed, but I'm asking.
It, uh, Alder, you can, you can ask your question of Alder Heck.
Okay.
Uh, it is up to him if he would like to respond.
Okay, okay. So, um, I understand that this will allow more flexibility. However, I am still like trying to understand how that would make a difference. Cause I, is this, this is assuming like developers will be. Private developers will be developing this or because as Director Stoudt stated, um. This would, this is going to be largely a city development plan, so whatever plan that we adopt now. Is what the city is going to be mov- moving forward in. I I hope I understand, I know. I'm so confused.
I I'm willing to answer.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Alder Bennett, for the question. Um, I I'm not assuming that private developers will be who develops this. It, the city and private developers have to follow the future land. The city and private developers have to follow the future land use map. And, uh, the concepts will influence how either a private development or a city development, uh, were to move forward. That, that, uh, the plan, the South Madison Plan guides either kind of development. Uh, and so, uh, that, that's why I think that this will still, uh, achieve, I think, uh, some flexibility and honor the original plan at the same time. But, uh, I, I, I think we, we all recognize that the concepts are just concepts, and the bigger issue is really additional flexibility in my mind.
Alder Foster?
Thank you. Um, I, I mean, I, I agree that the future land use map, uh, update to, to allow for that flexibility is really the, the critical element. Um, you know, we've heard over and over tonight, you know, the concept's just a concept, it really doesn't matter, and then we're spending like hours arguing about what the concept is, but apparently, everybody agrees it doesn't matter. And where I, I mean, I think it does matter a bit. And I think actually, in particular, probably matters more to the degree that the city is involved. And, um, you know, it is the thing that people look at. And so, you know, what, what Alder Evers put forward is, is really a real, relatively minor adjustments that just moves it a little bit closer to the kind of density that we, I think, should expect at a really high capacity transit stop. And so for, you know, the, the common council or the Plan Commission, fifteen years from now, or twenty years from now, that's wrestling with this concept, I would prefer that their starting point with that concept is one that's at least a little bit closer to the kind of density that I think is really needed for a sustainable city. So I, I'm going to vote no against this, although I appreciate the intent.
Thank you Alder. I have no other Alders in the queue. Uh, so just to clarify what we're voting on, um, this is, uh, if, if you vote aye, you're saying that you want to change Alder Evers' amendment to only impact the, uh, future land use map and to not impact the, the Thorsted concept. If you vote no, you're saying that you want the amendments to continue to change both the future land use map and the Thorsted concept. Just making sure that everybody understands what the vote is. Um, Alder Carter?
I'm just going to ask you to repeat that one more time for everyone.
Absolutely Alder. Uh, so firstly, we're voting to determine what the amendment is, and then we will vote on the amendment. That's thing one, okay? And so then thing two is, um, if you want the amendment to the plan to only change the future land use map, you should vote aye. If you want the amendment to the plan to change both the future land use map and the Thorsted concept, you should vote no. And so all those in. Alder Curry?
Can I ask a question?
Yes Alder.
Um, I guess it's for Director Stoudt, or, I'm sorry, I don't know your title, Greg, um.
Jeff.
Jeff. Um. Never mind, never mind.
Okay. So, uh, Alder Figaro Cole?
Okay, so I'm just trying to follow your directive here. We voting yes or no for this, for the amendment to the amendment? But then we still have to vote for the amendment, right? Okay, because I, it sounded like, like we voted no, and there's no men, no, you know, yes to the other one, but that's not what we're saying.
Yep, but you're, you're deciding whether you want to make two changes or one change. And then you will have to decide if you want to make any changes at all.
Right, got it, that's what I thought that.
Okay, so. Alder Wiheli?
I'm sorry, Madam Mayor, I'm a little bit confused. Can we go one, one at a time, perhaps, say, this is Alder Heck's amendment, and this is what it is, let's vote on it? Take out of the way and then go to, if it fails, then we go to.
That's what we're doing Alder.
Yeah, yeah, okay, okay, because I'm, I'm confused.
Yep, so, right now, you're, you're, you will, you have not yet decided whether you want to amend the plan. We will vote on that in a minute. Right now, you're deciding, if the plan should be amended, how do you want to amend it? Right, and so, eh, one option is to make two changes, which is what Alder Evers is proposing. And another option is to make one change, which is what Alder Heck is proposing. If you want to make no changes to the plan, uh, perhaps you don't even care about the outcome of this vote. Um, so, just saying. Um, but i- if you want fewer changes to the plan, you probably want to vote aye now. Okay, so, because an aye vote is to make one change, a no vote is to make two changes.
But can I still vote no to both?
Yes, eh, not in this vote, in the next vote. I'm, I'm hoping for some confirmation that we understand here. Alder Curry?
Okay, I feel remiss not asking this question. I, I feel my understanding is, a lot of the density concerns and issues come from what is now the Thorsted site. Seeing that Alder Heck's amendments allows for flexibility within that area and the zoning there, but within the whole plan, does that caught, does?
Uh, the only changes that we're discussing now are, are on the Thorsted site.
Correct, now I'm even more confused than.
So there's, there's two pieces in the plan, and, and maybe Heather can bring back the slides to help show this. Um, eh, in, in Alder Evers' amendment, that he's recommending two changes, and the first change is what you're looking at now to the future land use map. Right, and it's the question of, um, what density range, right? The second change is to what you're looking at now, which is the focus area concept. Right? And so you're, you're, you're basically, this is what Alder Evers would want, what's before you right now. Um, what was just previously up was the original plan. Right, and so those, those are the two changes that are being proposed. Right, so if you, if, if a no vote prevails on what's immediately before us, this concept would not change from what's currently in the, the plan that staff proposed. It, the only thing that would change would be the future land use map. If an, uh, sorry, that's if an aye vote prevails. If a, um, no vote prevails, both changes would happen. But, but you still, sorry, you still have to vote on whether you want to make the change or not. Right, so there's, there's two votes. Alder Bennett?
I, I don't know if this is a thing, but, um, could we vote on Alder Evers' alternate and then Alder Heck's, um, amendment? No, okay, that's not a thing, nevermind.
It's not, it's not a thing, sorry.
Okay.
All right. So, eh, all those in favor of changing only the future land use map, vote aye. All those in favor of having the amendment stay as changing the future land use map and the Thorsted concept, vote no. As your name is called, and the clerk will please call the roll. Alder Halverson?
No.
No. Alder Harrington McKinney?
Aye.
Aye. Alder Heck?
Aye.
Aye. Alder Limer?
Aye.
Aye. Vice President Martin?
Aye.
Aye. Alder Meadzi?
Aye.
Aye. Alder Revere?
Aye.
Aye. Alder Vitavir?
Aye.
Aye. Alder Wiheli?
Aye.
Aye. President Abbas?
Aye.
Aye. Alder Alboras is absent. Alder, Alder Benford?
Aye.
Aye. Alder Bennett?
Come back.
I apologize, Alder Bennett?
Come back to me, please.
Okay. Alder Carter?
Aye.
Aye. Alder Conklin?
Aye.
Aye. Alder Curry?
Aye.
Aye. Alder Evers?
No.
No. Alder Figaro Cole?
Aye.
Alder Figaro Cole?
Aye. Can you hear me?
I, I can now.
Okay, so that would be a yes, please, thank you.
Aye. Alder Foster?
No for me.
No. Alder Furman?
Aye.
Aye. And Alder Bennett?
No.
No?
Madam Mayor, I have fifteen ayes and four nos.
Thank you, so with fifteen ayes, the amendment prevails, and now what's before us, um, is to vote whether or not we want to amend the plan with this change. Right, so it's the single change to the future land use map to, uh, allow a slightly greater density a- on the Thorsted property. That's the only change we're voting on at this point in time. Um, and, I'm. I'm going to just guess that we need to do a roll call. Um. Alder Bennett?
This is as amended by Alder Heck's amendment.
Correct. Correct, so the, what we're voting on now is whether you want to change the plan with Alder Heck's amendment, which is to change only the future land use map. So, all those in favor of changing the plan, to changing the future land use map for the Thorsted area in the final plan, aye. Those opposed, no. Uh, is there an objection to recording a unanimous vote in favor? Yes, uh, so we will do a roll call then, uh, all those in favor of amending the plan, aye. Those opposed, no, as your name is called, and the clerk will call the roll, please. Alder Halverson?
No.
No. Alder Harrington McKinney?
Yes.
Aye. Alder Heck?
Aye.
Aye. Alder Limer?
No.
No. Vice President Martin?
Aye.
Aye. Alder Meadzi?
No.
No. Alder Revere?
Aye.
Aye. Alder Vitavir?
Aye.
Aye. Alder Wiheli?
Aye.
Aye. President Abbas?
Aye.
Aye. Alder Alboras is absent. Alder Benford? We can't hear you Alder Benford.
Aye.
Aye. Alder Bennett?
Aye.
Aye. Alder Carter? Come back to me, please. Alder Conklin?
Aye.
Aye. Alder Curry? I apologize, I didn't catch that.
Yes.
Aye. Alder Evers?
Aye.
Aye. Alder Figaro Cole?
Aye.
Aye. Alder Foster?
Aye.
Aye. Alder Furman?
Aye.
Aye. And Alder Carter?
Aye.
Aye?
Madam Mayor, I have sixteen ayes and three nos.
With sixteen ayes, the amendment passes, and we're back to the main motion, which is to adopt the plan as amended. Is there further discussion? Seeing no further discussion, is there any objection to me making a remark or two from the chair? Seeing no objection, I just want to say thank you to our planning staff for the incredible amount of work that they put into this planning process. Um, I pushed them rather hard on this one, uh, particularly with respect to engagement, um, and, you know, really listening to the community and, and taking them seriously, and finding new ways to engage, and, um, challenging them around the questions of, uh, you know, being honest about what we would be able to deliver as a city, um, in a plan. And, uh, they really stepped up, and I think did a really remarkably good job at putting this plan together. Um, not just in terms of the outcome, the actual plan document, um, but even more so in terms of the process that they went through to get to it. Um, and so I just really want to say a, a huge public thank you to Director Stoudt, and to all of her staff that worked on this plan, um, for the work that they did getting us to this point. Um, so, thank you. Um, and unless there is further discussion, is there any objection, um, to recording a unanimous vote in favor of adopting the South Madison Plan? President Abbas?
I'm confused, uh, what main motion was as amended by Alder Heck, and we have a roll call vote, right? And now you're saying there's a, another motion for unanimous consent?
We're, we're voting now to adopt the plan.
But I thought we already adopted as amended by Alder Heck.
No, we, we amended the, eh, so, Alder Evers made an amendment.
Mm-hmm.
Alder Heck proposed an amendment to that amendment.
That's right.
We accepted that on a roll call vote, and then we had a roll call vote on whether we wanted to amend the plan. That's the roll call that we just had, that passed. Now we're back to the main motion of do we want to adopt the amended plan?
Perfect, yep, so it's getting late.
That's all right. Uh, so I, I'll take that as not an objection from President Abbas, but Alder Meadzi? Alder, you're muted.
Sorry about that. I was a little bit confused myself, I wanted to vote yes for the original motion and, um, and not to the other, um, well, you know what I mean.
You wanted to vote against amending the plan?
I, I, I just want the original motion that was, uh, for, uh, without all the amendments. So, I, I don't know what the, so I was a little bit confused, so hopefully you guys understand what I was trying to do.
I, I think I do Alder, and unless there's an objection, um, we'll have the clerk, uh, record you as voting no on that last roll call. Which would change the count to four nos.
Okay. All right.
Doesn't, doesn't change the outcome, but we'll record you as, eh, eh, as having that sentiment. There, any further clarifications or discussion on the motion to adopt the South Madison Plan as amended? Alder Wiheli?
I'm sorry, Madam Mayor, so just to be clear, what we have adopted and voted is Alder Heck's amendment?
Yes, that we have, we have made that change to the plan. Now we are voting on adapt, uh, passing the plan as amended.
So Alder Evers is not in, 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 in the plan?
Yeah, the, the change to the concept, the Thorsted concept is not in the plan at this point.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm. Everybody else good? So any objection to recording a unanimous vote in favor of the South Madison Plan as amended by Alder Heck? Seeing no objection, that plan is adopted. And congratulations to Jeff and the rest of the staff team for dragging. And congratulations to Jeff and the rest of the staff team for dragging it across the finish line. All right. We do uh still have two items before us. It's been suggested to me that someone might want to make a motion for a brief recess. Alder Vittavir, is that a, a motion for a five-minute recess?
Yes, five minutes, please.
All right, and Alder Wiheli will second. Is there any objection to recording a unanimous vote in favor of a five-minute recess? Seeing no objection, it's eleven PM now. We'll be back at eleven oh five. We're at eleven oh five, uh but because um it turned to eleven oh one right after I finished speaking, I'll give people a little grace coming back, but when you're back, uh please do bring your camera back on. All right, now it's eleven oh six, so we'll come back and I will ask the clerk to please call the roll. Alder Halverson?
Present.
Alder Harrington McKinney?
Present.
Alder Heck?
Here.
Alder Limer?
Here.
Vice President Martin? We'll come back. Alder Meadzi?
Present.
Alder Revere?
Here.
Alder Vittavir?
Here.
Alder Wiheli?
Here.
President Abbas?
Yeah.
Alder Alboras absent. Alder Benford?
Present.
Alder Bennett? Uh we'll come back. Alder Carter?
Present.
Alder Conklin?
Here.
Alder Curry? Alder Evers?
Here.
Alder Figaro Cole?
Here.
Alder Foster?
Here.
Alder Furman?
Present.
Vice President Martin?
Here.
Alder Bennett?
Here.
And Madam Mayor, we have quorum. Thank you. Um we are now on item sixty-one, which is Legisstar six-six-nine-four-nine. Amending sections of the Madison General Ordinances to revise the jurisdiction of the Common Council Executive Committee. Um I'll remind you that uh of the history here, uh at the ten nineteen meeting last year, the motion to adopt failed on a vote of nine-nine. Um reconsideration was requested uh at our November second meeting. Uh reconsideration was uh approved and discussion was referred to this meeting, so um the, I believe um the appropriate motion is to adopt and we'll go from there, but I'll just note that we had two registrants on this item. Justice Castaneda of District Fifteen in support, available to answer questions, and Janet Hirsch of District Nine in opposition, not wishing to speak. Are there any questions for a registrant? Seeing none, President Abbas, a motion, please?
Motion to adopt.
Second.
It's moved and seconded to adopt. Is there discussion? Uh actually, before we move into discussion, um because it wouldn't be a council meeting without this, my computer is going to restart. Uh and so I will call on Alder Furman and President Abbas, I will hand the chair over to you, I will restart and be right back. So Alder Furman.
Uh thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council President. Um I'd like to propose an amendment, um which is would, to be added the following text to this um ordinance, which would be, uh this ordinance shall be effective on April nineteenth, twenty twenty. And if I get a second, I will explain my amendment.
You mean April nineteen, twenty twenty-two. You said twenty twenty.
Sorry, twenty twenty-two, that's correct. Council President, my apologies.
All right. Alder Heck, a second from you? Okay.
Um th- thank you, Alder Heck, for the second. Um thank you, Council President. Um I'm proposing this amendment um uh a- at this point, um as a, a a way to hopefully get this item passed. Um I think I've uh uh explained my intent. Um I think some people um uh believe I was uh targeting um the current CCEC, um which um I still don't understand because I've agreed with just about all of their votes. Um but I think at this point, um I, I, I believe very strongly in this um change uh for CCEC, both for the, the function of this body um as well as um public, um and think that this um ha- having this effective uh with new leadership um in April, um is just the right move forward at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder Furman. Any further comments? I do not see any hand raised. And I will speak. Uh, thank you very much. I appreciate the amendment. Uh try to take the personal factor out of it. However, I will express uh some of the concerns with it. And I think so it's important for us as a body to think about the future of CCEC as well.
President Abbas? I'm sorry, before you start, can I just ask for Alder Furman to repeat what the amendment is?
Oh, Alder Furman amendment is
Sure.
Be
Go, go ahead, uh President, go ahead, sorry.
It will be adopted. Uh the date, if it's this pass, this will be adopted on April nineteenth, I believe, twenty twenty-two.
Thank you, sorry for the interruption.
No worries. Yeah, so uh Alder Revere and also Alder Benford, they have a longer institutional history, especially Alder Revere is uh here for a long period of time, and during time of Alder Benford, I believe the CCEC was more an admin role. They play administrative role, I forget the name of CCEC. In that time, the council decided to change the role of the CCEC and in more leadership and discussing about the key issues City of Madison faces, especially those issues which uh which doesn't have any place to go on a committees. Also, key important issues where council have uh major difference of opinions, or I will say conflicts, where it orders and we as, we could discuss those topic, create consensus and move forward. Taking CCEC's power, making it more administrative uh branch, looking into administrative work, is a one step backward, rather than forward. I really hoped my colleague uh give some time, instead of making this amendment and changing the, the scope of CCEC, perhaps we could have that more discussion on within a CCEC and then decide in which direction we all want to go. Rather, we really truly want this to be administrative body, or do we want, beside administrative body, we want to look into policies related decisions? As an example, uh let's say if the issue of uh violence prevention have no place in any, any committees, that could be discussed at CCEC. Uh I will give you a couple of other examples. I, my, under my leadership, I tried my best in all good honesty to balance the CCEC. I presented a resolution to, to set the criteria for homeless shelter. That failed at CCEC. I did not debate it that on a common council floor. So the role of CCEC, where we could discuss as a policymaker, where and how the shelter issue was very uh how I say, uh there was a lot of difference of opinion on there, how, how could we move forward? And the role of CCEC was also key for the community to come and listen and have that discussion, as well as from us as a council policymaker to decide on the high-level topics, how we have to move forward. Another thing I want to say as a caution to our colleagues moving forward, if we decided move out this role of CCEC as a refer and just create it as administrative body, tomorrow, uh several issues, let's say, uh emergency plan, uh which was referred to CCEC by me, because I do believe that is a place to be discussed. Any order can make an motion and move it to a, yeah, let's say, Police and Fire Commission, I'm just giving you an example, or any other, I mean, PSCR or any other committees, and just make CCEC irrelevant. Uh also, I will say, beside those, all those things, this whole debate around referrals and, and the, the main sponsor email to all orders about how this homelessness issue and body-won camera issue and all that stuff come to committees, it's wastage of time, or you know, there are other committees, that's their role to discuss. I respect your, all of your opinions regarding our committee structure. And I do understand sometimes we refer too many places, but why we are cherry-picking one CCEC rather than looking into all others committees as well, and see how the other committees are working? Uh default recommendation was to look into all the structure of our BCCs, but here we are discussing one committee. And that's, that's also, I personally, I know uh uh my fellow Alder said uh there was no attack, or intention was not attack, but I personally felt like when there is always people of color in a leadership role, either it's Alder Carter or Alder Balde, and these are the orders which I watch those meetings and part of the common council and myself, there's always this type of policy comes forward. And undermining the role of the council leadership, or undermining the role of the minority leaders who want to lead the community or lead the council, rather I prefer we have a role of collaboration or discussion. Alder Foster ordinance, which council approved and, and we are following those referral process, that basically address most of those concerns about referral. And let me remind this council as well. Alder Haverson, many of his referrals was challenged on this float on council, and it did not went to various committees. Council still have this power to decide if they want those referrals or not. Removing those referrals completely from CCEC is truly a step backward. If the intention is to give CCEC more time, making it more robust, those are discussions should happen on CCEC floor within a committee, those eight elected official, rather than making a legislative decisions and decide what should be the faith of CCEC. I'm just very disappointed the way this whole politics, you say politics, or however you say, this is happening around the CCEC and council leadership. I will encourage it to completely vote against it, and let's retable it to have a discussion. I'm, I'm happy to have the discussion and, and perhaps if the intention is next council leadership, they could have that uh discussion, and then decide either they really want to change the role of the CCEC or not. Thanks.
Thank you, President Abbas. Just to confirm, we're on uh the amendment offered by Alder Furman um to add language around the effective date uh being April nineteenth of this year. Yes, okay. Um so on the question of the effective date, Alder Figaro Cole? You're muted, Alder.
Thank you. So just as, as a, uh me and my process questions, because I wanna make sure I got this right. We, we have discussed this topic for a long time already, so is the, is, is this a place for me to call a question and just go to a vote? Is that an, an opportunity for us to go ahead and do that?
Alder, if you call the question now, you're calling the question on um Alder Furman's amendment?
Okay. And then we have to vote on the other, on the other one?
Yeah.
But I'll, I'll wait, but I mean, again, we had just like discussed this and I, what I heard, we already heard before, so I'm a little bit disappointed about that, to be honest, to hear the same rhetoric, so yes, I'll, I'll wait on the next turn. Thank you.
Right. Thank you, Alder. Alder Carter, on the question of the effective date? Yes, I will not be supporting it. Thank you. Thank you, Alder Carter. Are there, is there a further discussion on the question of uh Alder Furman's amendment on the effective date? All right, seeing none. Is there any objection to recording a unanimous vote in favor of, yes, okay. All those in favor of adding language around an effective date of April nineteenth, twenty twenty-two? I, those opposed, no, as your name is called, and I'll ask the clerk to please call the roll. Alder Haversen?
No.
No? Alder Harrington McKinney?
No.
No? Alder Heck?
Aye.
Aye? Alder Limmer?
Aye.
Aye? Vice President Martin?
Aye.
Aye? Alder Mayadze?
No.
No? Alder Revere?
Aye.
Aye? Alder Vitavir?
Aye.
Aye? Alder Wiheli?
No.
No? President Abbas?
No.
No? Alder Boris is absent, Alder Benford?
Aye.
Aye? Alder Bennett?
Uh, aye.
Aye? Alder Carter? No. No? Alder Conklin?
Aye.
Aye? Alder Curry?
Aye.
Aye? Alder Evers?
Aye.
Aye? Alder Figueroa Cole?
Aye.
Aye? Alder Foster?
Aye.
Aye? Alder Furman?
Aye.
Aye?
Madam Mayor, I have thirteen ayes and six noes.
Thank you, with thirteen ayes, the amendment passes, we're now back to the main motion, uh, which is, uh, adopting, uh, as amended. Uh, discussion on that, Alder Halverson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, um, I would just say, with regards to this, we have, we have been around this, and I know that, uh, I want to take a vote on this, but I would just say, if you look at, uh, number one, where it says that, uh, you're basically saying that they are not, anything that's not referred to other committees, if you put any other committee into this, um, sentence, it, it doesn't make any sense, and so I think if the purpose is to, um, not have, have things that are only structural administration, then you should just abolish this, this committee altogether and just get an administrative committee, or heck, we could have, we could actually just have our function discussions on the floor here, um, so I will not be supporting this, um, it doesn't make any sense, I, if you want to get rid of it, we should get rid of it.
Thank you, Alder, Alder Figueroa Cole?
Right, so I'd like to call a question, please, and go to a vote.
Alder, conveniently, there's no other alders in the queue at this time?
Thank you.
So, uh, oh, there is now one other alder in the queue, Alder Harrington McKinney?
So, Madam Mayor, are, will this go into, um, discussion on the amendment?
We're in discussion now on the main motion, Alder.
Okay, and so if that, this, uh, passes, then it'll be a yea or nay?
No, this, this is the yea or nay on the question. The amendment passed, we're now back to the main motion, whether you want to, um, amend the jurisdiction of C C E C.
Okay, please help me, I'm really being slow tonight, is this that, at what point is there discussion, are we in discussion now?
Yes.
Okay, alright, and I have discussion then.
Go ahead, Alder.
Okay, thank you, um, uh, I am, uh, I will not.
Mayor, I'm, I'm so sorry, but there's a motion to call the question.
Uh, it, Alder, it, it's not debatable, if Alder wishes to bring that motion forward, it was, it was moot at the time she made it, because there is no other alders in the queue, it is no longer moot. Is there a second to call the question?
Yes.
Alright, so it's been moved and seconded to call the question, is there objection to calling the question? Yes. Uh, so then, uh, all those in favor of calling the question, aye, those opposed, no, as your name is called, and the clerk will please call the roll. Alder Halverson?
No.
No? Alder Harrington McKinney?
No.
No? Alder Heck?
Aye.
Aye? Alder Limmer?
Aye.
Aye? Vice President Martin?
Aye.
Aye? Alder Mayadze?
No.
No? Alder Revere?
No.
No? Alder Vitavir?
Aye.
Aye? Alder Wiheli?
No.
No? President Abbas?
No.
No? Alder Boris is absent, Alder Benford?
No.
No? Alder Bennett?
Aye.
Aye? Alder Carter?
No.
No? Alder Conklin?
Aye.
Aye? Alder Curry?
Aye.
Aye? Alder Evers?
Aye.
Aye? Alder Figueroa Cole?
Aye.
Aye? Alder Foster?
Aye.
Aye? Alder Furman?
Aye.
Aye?
Madam Mayor, I have eleven ayes and eight noes.
With eleven ayes, the motion to call the question passes, the question is called, we'll move directly to a vote, uh, Attorney Haas wants to contradict me. It's a two-thirds vote, isn't it? Damn it, I always forget that one. Sorry, 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 it's a good thing we have you here, Attorney Haas, uh, so, my apologies to the body, um, calling the question requires a two-thirds vote, eleven votes does not make the two-thirds threshold, the question is not called. We are back to discussion of the main motion, and in the queue was Alder Harrington McKinney.
Okay, thank you, Madam Mayor, um, uh, let me start, um, um, this item was, uh, very challenging, um, uh, for me, and, um, the reason is, is that, um, and, and I'll just go through my notes, um, the order says receivers referrals of ordinances, uh, resolutions and reports from the common council that are not referred to other committees. Um, two, three, and four, in that section really challenged me. Um, discuss, develop, and recommend to the council in dialogues with interested parties, a work plan for council action during the next year, and track the plan as approved by the council. I know that that was struck through, and I'm glad that it was. Um, it raised a few questions, uh, for me, is, is that, um, who would hold the committees accountable? Um, constituents that elected the twenty alders, the twenty alders select or elects the president and vice president of the executive committee. The other members of the executive committee are selected from the twen- the eighteen other alders. Will the committees have independent authority to make decisions? The committee members are appointed by the city mayor. The chair of these committees are also appointed by the city, sitting, uh, sitting, sitting mayor. We have said that the boards, committees, and commissions are not equally vetted. We have some strong, very strong chairs and committees that are actionable, and we've got some committees that are not, and they really need to be sunset. The, the, the problem that I have with this is, is that boards, commit- members of board committees and commissions are not elected by, um, the, the constituent, they're not, they're not accountable, and who are they accountable for, or, or to, and so my, my uncomfortableness is that you, you have an executive committee, and I've been on the council since twenty fifteen. Some of the resolutions and some of the actions, uh, and amendments that are very strong were created by the executive committee. Executive committee have gone through, um, some very, um, 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 uh, really poignant, uh, very decisive challenges in the council, and they have done an excellent job so far, and so I'm really baffled as to why, uh, this amendment is coming forward to take those, those, some of those, uh, and I'm going to say powers from the executive committee, and place it to boards, committees, and commissions, when it's been said over and over again that the boards, committees, and commissions, um, needs additional training. I don't think that, um, the boards, committees, and commissions should be the only source of referrals. If, if you don't want an executive committee, just do away with it altogether, and not have an executive committee, and let everything rest and go through the council to make those decisions, and if the council is not making those decisions, send it to the committees. I don't think that this is something that, um, we want to do going forward, I'm very surprised that, um, and, and no, I'm not surprised, let me take that back, is, is that, um, how we're looking at the council now in this virtual world is not the council that I, that would be approving some of the things that the executive committee should be grappling with. So I'm not going to support it, uh, whether it passes or not, I think it's the wrong movement and the direction for executive committee. Executive committee should have the opportunity to not just, um, uh, receive, they should receive information that's referred to them, uh, and not just, um, to send that, or whatever information over to boards, committees, and commissions, to have that authority, especially when they're not equally matched. Uh, one of the reasons that I voted against the amendment, uh, tonight is that we have an overflow of boards, commissions, and committees, and I've sat in, on some boards, committees, and commissions where the chair and the members of the committee were just so, uh, attuned and so informed and so efficient to handle the business of the council, but I've sat on some boards, committees, and commissions when they can repeatedly ask, what am I supposed to do, what am my task, and all of those, and so there's a lot of work to be done in strengthening boards, commissions, and committees, and I don't think that that work is being done, and I think that, uh, stripping, and I'm going to say stripping, the, uh, executive committee of some of those responsibilities does not, does not address what is the real issue in strengthening the boards, committees, and commissions. And so I will not be supporting, um, the, um, uh, six, one, six, or nine.
Thank you, Alder. On the question of adoption, Alder Carter?
I will not be supporting this either, and in fact, I agree with Alder, uh, Havelson and, and McKinney. Uh, the next step should be to sunset C C E C, because essentially that's what you're doing, don't sugarcoat it, don't put icing on the cake, that's exactly what you're doing, and you are diminishing the power of your executive committee. For those of you who are new and might not understand the, the importance of the executive committee, then let's sunset it. We talk about sunsetting B C Cs all the time, you can start with this, and, uh, that would be my friendly amendment, if this is the appropriate time to do amendment, but I, I depend on the mayor for, uh, keeping me on the right road.
Alder, there's no such thing as a friendly amendment, um, if you, if you honestly wish to make an amendment, that is the appropriate, now is the appropriate time to do it.
I move in, and I will move in it for amendment, not a friendly one, I will move an amendment that in light of the, um...
Alder Carter, let me pause you right there, uh, because it, it, you, you really do need to put it into writing and ensure with your colleagues and the clerk if you wish to move an amendment, well, I'll come back to you.
I will do that, come back to me.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Wiheli, on the question of adoption?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, I, and I know many times and many meetings, uh, many things have been said, and I'm gonna, I'm not going to repeat what has been said, but I want to reiterate two points. One point is, this is power and privilege at this point. Uh, we talked about so many referrals, and if you look at the, uh, this, this, the history of this particular item, it was referred many times because we didn't have, we, we, we are trying to change the vote of those who voted no. Uh, an example is when we adopted, or when the motion failed in October nineteenth, let me just check my s- where is it? Here it is, yes, so the item was introduced, and it came to the common council, and it was decided to put in, uh, uh, on file without prejudice, and it was brought again, and it was said that it should come to this, uh, the common council, October nineteenth, it failed. And then it, because we did not have some of the elders who were not there, they were asked to reconsider it. And when they reconsidered, then there were three people who were absent, and then it was referred to the other meetings. So if we are talking about C C E C is a place for so many referrals, then we have to talk about the power and privilege. Who is in power, who can make those changes, and why not other people cannot make these changes? Because we are changing the vote, we don't have enough vote, so let's refer it to another time, or another date. And this is what we are coming, like other, my colleague said, if we are undermining the leadership of the C C E C or the function of the C C E C, then we should sunset. We don't need to have a body that don't have any, any power or any activities that can empower as an executive body. Uh, executive body is a place where we can make decisions, but also we can discuss other important things about the common council. So with that, I will not be voting, and the amendment that was made tonight is just a sugar coat, not to feel like it's a retaliation of Alder Abbas. Uh, either way, whoever's going to be the president of the common council, President Abbas has three more months, January, February, and March. But this is the protection of the body as the C C E C, as an executive body, and like Alder Carter said, for those of us who are new, we don't understand or know the history of the C C E C and its importance. At some day and some long term in the future, we'll realize that this was a very bad move, and I will urge you not to vote for this amendment, thank you.
Thank you, Alder, Alder Mayadze, on the question of adoption?
I think, I think my colleague, my colleague said it best, so I'm not going to add to it. Thanks.
Alright, thank you, Alder. Uh, Alder Carter, I don't know that I've gotten an email from you, but did you, oh, well, we'll go to Alder Bennett.
Let me keep this real brief, um, because I know a lot has been said, so I just wanted to say that I think, that, I don't think, I know, this argument that we need to completely strip C C E C or let it go altogether is or let it go altogether is a, it's a fallacy and it's a false dilemma, fallacy, which presents two extremes. We're not going to the extreme that C C C completely needs to go away. Just that it needs to be refocused. So that's where I'm at. And I, I wish that new arguments were presented today that were better than a fallacy.
Thank you, Alder Bennett. Alder Figueroa Cole.
Thank you, Mayor. So, I mean, again, call the question because we have had this discussion plenty. And I haven't heard anything, absolutely anything new on the topic. So I just don't see why we can vote on it. However, I, I don't even want to say I'm disappointed because I'm just, there's just not even measure for that anymore. I, it's not about that. It's just, I'm annoyed, just to be totally honest, that we continue to use this, the race card to deal with this particular issue. It's really, it is disturbing to me that we continue to attack, to use the pretenses or to pretend that you know how somebody else is feeling towards you. If you really like, I mean, I know that people involved in this discussion, you know who you are. I have emailed you together as a group. I have asked you if you really feel threatened, if you really feel like someone in a position of power because of their skin color is coming after you because you are a brown person or because you're a woman. Please, we are all adults here. Nobody is putting a gun to your head and say, shut up and don't defend your rights. If you really, really, really feel that that's the way certain members are treating you, please address it. If you need help, we have help that can help you with that.
Mayor, I'm sorry, but how do you object to when somebody's saying something that you think is.
You.
I called the question and.
You, first of all, we will have order.
Yeah, but.
You cannot all just start speaking. Until I call on you, please remain silent unless you have an appropriate motion to make.
All right. I'm sorry.
Alder Figueroa Cole, you, you can't both call the question and speak to it.
No, that's, that's what I mean. So I called the question, but we want to talk, so let's talk. Again, we are, there's nothing new here. Nothing new that has presented tonight that we haven't discussed already. So if you guys want honesty, and this other talk about us that the new people don't understand what we're doing, how many times are you going to use that line? For the love of God. Like, come on, guys. If you want to honesty, let's be honest. This is just about personal problems that continue to come in council. And we keep on talking about how, you know, earlier people speaking about how, this is in a virtual world that this happens. Like, this is going to change when we go in person. These are personal differences between a handful of people. And for some reason, there's this, this lack of interest to solve them on a private mode. That's, that's always happening here. And again, I tried via email to communicate to that handful of people. I, I tried to really make the connection and see if we can work these things out, but nothing, nothing came out of it. So let's just take the vote, please. That's what I'm asking. If we want to talk about honesty, let's just be honest. There's nothing here but personal issues. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. I'm going to remind us all, please, to, firstly, to address your colleagues by their titles and with respect. And secondly, to try and keep things in the realm of policy. That's the business that we're here to do. I know on this particular topic, this body has repeatedly failed to keep the conversation in the realm of policy. I would just encourage us all again to try and do that. Alder Harrington McKinney.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Some of the issues that have come before previous executive committee, one is the role of the chief of staff and the duties of the chief of staff and the hiring and selection of the first chief of staff. That was done out of executive committee. The O I R report was generated out of an executive committee workings. The civilian oversight committee was a result of work out of the executive committee. The executive committee has tackled some, some critical areas that many of us are voting on now and coming into fruition. It was said, and I'm just going to go there and I'm going to try to be as gentle as I can, of the playing of the race card. And when you say that, that's offensive to me because what, what, what I'm hearing is the playing of the race card, but the term that is used is equitable and diversity. And so that's a substitute for that word. It is, whether you know it or not, but I'm just going to own it because I know it to be a fact. I have sat under the leadership of some presidents and vice presidents of the executive committee, and they were ill-equipped. They were absolutely not prepared for the position. But what happened, they had such strong other members on that body that came together and supported those, those presidents and to help them to move through that leadership. It is a fact when there is a, prior to this, let me just say prior to this, when a person of color assumes the position of leadership, there is, has been historically pushback in that position. It does, has not happened in other situations, but historically, and it is evident and it is documented by those who it has impacted, that when there is a person of color in leadership, then we get all of this pushback. It is privileged. When I was vice president, it was, it was privileged and I felt it there. And so, so I'm not playing the race card. I'm just calling it what it is. And in this particular incident, the executive committee has been very, very, very instrumental in moving legislation that we are now voting on, and that's a reality. They did that work within the confines of the executive committee, brought that work back to the council. The council looked at it and said, yea or nay, and sent it back and they worked back and forth. But the end result is some of the primary legislation that you are facing or that, that is in effect now came out of the executive committee. And so what, what my challenge is, is that it feels as though you're taking out the teeth. I'm, I'm not going to be on the executive committee. I'm on the executive committee now. But there was a time, this is the first, only two times that I've served on the executive committee because the door was closed. There was just no entryway into being on the executive committee. But, you know, this back and forth, this is what we're looking at in terms of making a decision today in 2022 that will impact the incoming administrative, the, the leadership of the council. That's what we're impacting. And so if we need to fine tune it, if we need to do what, whatever we need to do. But this absolutely negates the, the, the executive committee and the functionality of the, of the executive committee. And I said is that it is the legislative arm. We've got the mayor, the mayor's deputy, and that's a functioning arm on the mayor's side. The executive committee is the functioning arm of the elected officials. And by taking that away, to me, it just seems as though maybe we just don't even need to have an executive committee. Just sunset it. And then all of the discussions, decisions can either go to a committee, board, or commission, or be housed on the council floor. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder Harrington McKinney. Alder Wihalehe.
Madam Mayor, I just want to apologize for speaking without you calling me. So I just want to apologize. But what I want to say already, Alder McKinney have said, but I want to add one more thing, which is we're making decisions based on personality, not on policy. And what has happened through this resolution has really, really created a toxic environment at the council. We have people who have different lived experience with different background. And if someone is privileged because of their background or their identity, then they, they have the right to do so. But you don't gaslight other people and say, give me a break. You know, why is this? You, you can't gaslight someone's feelings. You can't gaslight and disregard what someone is feeling. All we have said and, you know, what we explained is there was a process. The process was not done. And if I have to repeat every time this item is brought forward, I will repeat, even if you don't want to hear it, that's fine. But I am entitled to my feelings and I am entitled to my expression. And my expression is this whole thing was not followed, the, the true process. If there was a change in the C C C, there's a president. The main first point of interaction was to have a conversation with the president of the common council executive committee. If there is a change that needs to be done, the second place is the T F A. We do not have that either. And we had numerous meetings and vote. And just because we want to change the way the voted, we wanted the vote to, to, to be acceptable or pleasant to us, then we're going to keep on referring. And that's the ultimate reason why we're changing this whole resolution so that we don't have resolution, I mean referral. How many referrals did we have? And I'm really disappointed with some of the alders. When someone speaks, you don't speak for them. You don't speak for the experience. You don't speak for, for their frustrations. And I would really appreciate if someone refrained from saying such things. Someone said that I reached out to this, this, this nonsense. No one reached out to individually to me and say, hey, Nasra, are you feeling this? How can I be support? What are you feeling about this? Maybe we can have a personal discussion. Let's do that. No one has ever done that. And for someone to make a false statement saying that they have reached out to these individuals, it's false, a false statement. And we're not here to lie, but we need to be honest and candid about how we interact with others and how we can be able to see each other's viewpoint rather than making a lot of assumptions. And I don't appreciate that. So, Madam Mayor, I apologize for, for slash, just talking without your permission. But I want people to understand this is a process, not against the policy, but against personality. And if there's a personality differences, we could have voted on April, October 19th. It failed, so let's move on. Why do we have to bring again? Because apparently it's the only people who want to talk and bring up is the people who are really talking the truth. But those people who are bringing back and forth and back and forth are not blamed for anything. They are, they are the clean people that, oh, they're being attacked by the racial card or by this, this, this. And I think we are adults and we are here to think and analyze the facts. There was no process that was done. There is a policy that's disregarding the will of the executive body, and I'm not going to vote for that. Even if I have to bring again and again, I will bring it. But please don't insult my intelligence. And don't insult my intelligence by saying that I'm using the racial card. I am a black woman and I have my own experience. I have my own lived experience. And people need to understand that. Not to gaslight, oh, you know, people should not be using, you know, racial card. You are, you know, there's colorism. If you are a lighter person of color and you don't have that experience, that's fine. But don't insult our intelligence and our experience. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Miyazze.
I too wanted to apologize. I meant to say point of order. Is that, is that in a, is that okay when, if I was unmute myself and say point of order? Is that, is that okay or?
Yes, Alder, that's, that is absolutely an acceptable interruption. It's usually followed by a question.
Okay, so sorry about that. I was, I just couldn't find the words to actually say that. So I just wanted to apologize and I want to also echo, but. I just, Wiley just said. We, I, I guess we need to really be respectful and address our questions to you, to you, Madam Mayor because I, I, I feel this divisiveness. And there's been so much said on this common council that I, I just want to, us 20 alders to actually come to a place where we're actually doing the job of the city, which is trying to really advocate for our constituents. For us to say things like the race card. I mean, I think, to myself, I think it's ordained that we have the most diverse common council, that it was not by, just by luck that we're here. I think that, given the disparities in the city that we have, I think we're here for a reason, to do the job, to make sure that the voices of this city is heard. So for anybody not to, for even the people to say, I don't know why people are saying what they're saying because I have an experience that, that racism when I'm, when getting pulled over. I tell you, we as, as African-American people, I want to say this and be stern when I say this. We have a curse and we have a blessing. The curse is because of the color of our skin, what we go through. But the blessing is the resilience, that we're going to stand strong. We're going to come and bring it and try to come and help everybody. So we need to stop this divisiveness and basically try to come together to do the work of the city. So I wanted to apologize again. I should have said point of order, but that was just stirring my soul and I had to say something there, so I'm sorry.
Thank you, Alder Miyazze. And it might be useful in, absent a council chief of staff, I'll maybe ask Attorney Haas to dredge up the cheat sheet for Robert's rules and send that around to the council again. And so folks can have that at their fingertips and, and you won't need to search for the words because you'll be able to look them up. President Abbas.
Thank you. Let me make one thing really clear. This whole community is watching this, also this common council. I'm not only a brown man, I'm a Muslim immigrant brown man. Again, I'm a Muslim, migrate to America, Muslim immigrant brown man. My experience, if I feel discriminated or I feel this council is discriminating, if I'm sharing this experience, that does not mean I'm using race card. Let me make another thing very clear. Your race play a critical role in your life and journey. Either it's positively, either negatively. It depends where you come from, how much privilege you have. It plays a very important role. I know my journey where I come from. And it is extremely disappointing when there's a conflict with the white folks. I am being told by some fellow of this member, it's my responsibility to find the solution, putting all the guilt again on minority communities. This is shameful. Using race card is absolutely, this phrase I heard all too often. And it ignite a certain anger and frustration. It's happening again and again. I just don't want to discuss more on personal issues, but I do feel this council need to consider, or perhaps we as a council, I president, I should organize a meeting on microaggression. And what exactly the race is and how people of color feel when they get pushed to the corner. Thanks.
Thank you, President Abbas. Alder Carter?
Well, if I didn't know better, I would think I was in Tupelo, Mississippi instead of Madison, Wisconsin. I just want to, um, I won't be moving my, uh, my motion. Uh, because I'm just at a loss for words right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Bennett?
If I can get my computer to work today, um, I just want to say, I, I like, I don't, I don't know. This debate is um, heart wrenching, I think for everyone. Um, and I want to say that all of you are very validated in how you feel. All of us in general are validated about how we feel about race and how that plays a role in our decisions, because it does. It plays a role in like every decision that we make. So I, 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 I just want to validate that, that when you feel that way, I get it. Um, we're entitled to feel that way. Um, and I also want to say that, um, coming out of this, I hope that we can go through some healing because every time we've had this debate, it's been really con- I, it's not even controversial, it's just, ugh, attacking, uh, in, on either end of the table. Um, like, maybe attacking isn't the right word to say. I'm sorry, I'm, words are hard right now. But I want to say that I am very open to, um, learning. Um, and I feel as though on my end, I have felt a bit, I've been questioning like why these are coming up when, when people in, in open session or behind or, um, um, in private have stated that like, um, new people like myself are only making these types of votes because other people or other white people are telling us how to vote or that they're using our color as a means to get these votes across. I feel like insulted on my own intelligence when that's stated, um, as if I'm not a free thinker. Um, and can make up my mind on these votes. Um, I felt as though when I've made this vote in particular, I haven't done so, um, because of some racially biased thinking. However, I'm really open to understanding more why there's those feelings. Um, and if you feel as though myself or anyone else on council is being racist or Islamophobic or in, against immigrants, we can have that discussion. Um, and I just, I think that like out, out, out of this, we shouldn't come out of this discussion or out of, out, out of council with these hard feelings because that's going to affect how we operate in the future. And that we do need to, um, come to terms with why we're feeling this way, um, and have some healing um, in this process. So that's where I'm at in this. Um, I kind of just want to take the vote and talk later about healing.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Figaro Cole?
Thank you, Mayor. I, I have one short comment and a question for you. So I, um, yeah, I, I, I mean, what I said is what I said and I's coming, been out of pure frustration and mainly for from the com- from the context that Alder Bennett just explained. To have people on this committee call me and, and again, you know, to tell me directly that a white male is controlling my vote. Uh, so it's just like, like he puts my, he's insulting to me. And, and it's frustrating to, to the level that I cannot, that I cannot express. Um, because we are all adults and we should be able to have this discussions. We should be able to communicate with each other and get this this information out there. We shouldn't be having to have discussions here in public. You should be able to pick up the phone and have the, if you felt offended by something, someone or something that someone said, pick up the phone and have discussion. That's all I'm trying to get at. But then for you, Mayor, I have a question which I know I asked before because it keeps on coming up. This discussion about process. I mean, is there an actual ordinance or, or, um, process that actually states that we have to go and talk to the lead of the committee to make a change the committee and then go to the TFA's committee to have the TFA's committee make a decision and then bring it to council? Or can any of us at any point in time make a change and bring it forward? Without getting validation from anybody. I mean, what, what is, what is the process? I, I'm trying, I, I still don't understand that.
Thank you, Alder. It, um, you are correct that any alder at any point in time can introduce a resolution or, uh, propose an amendment to the ordinances. And there's no requirement to consult with anyone except, uh, that if you're proposing an ordinance change, you must consult with the city attorney and have them draft that. Um, if you're proposing a resolution, it's highly recommended that you consult with the city attorney's office to make sure that you have it in the proper form. Um, but uh, other than that, I, I, and the city attorney can, can contradict me if, if he wishes, but I, I don't believe there's any requirement. Um, any alder can propose a, a resolution or an ordinance amendment. Um, I, obviously there's some requirements around those being introduced at one council meeting. Um, any referrals and then coming back at the next council meeting unless there's a, a vote to supersede that. But, um, that's, that's the problem. That's the, the technical legal process. I, I will say that, um, there's a perhaps less technical legal process that, uh, in general, the council has followed in the past, which does involve conversations with impacted staff and agencies. Um, often does involve conversations with impacted committees. Um, and, uh, you know, there's, there's been numerous items where before a formal proposal, formal resolution, ordinance amendment is introduced, that it's discussed at length uh, by either the impacted committees or the council itself, uh, before something would come forward for a formal vote. So I, I mean, I think technically, legally, there is a, a fairly short um, process that's required. Um, informally. Uh, and I think again, this is something that a chief of staff would, would support. Um, there is a, a more extended process that people have come to expect.
Thank you. Um, I appreciate that. I mean, this is, is, um, it's that discussion keeps on coming up and it's extremely confusing to talk about rules when the rules don't really exist. And, um, and then lastly, um, on regard to this claim of the emails, I mean, we have public record laws, you can, you can request it or I can simply send email to everybody and you can see where my take was. So it's clear where, where my frustration is coming up. I will do that after the meeting. So you can all have a copy of the emails that I sent on this regard. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Curry?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I am embarrassed that I had to raise my hand to speak to this, but I don't know if I would have been able, if I will be able to sleep tonight if I don't. Um, make note of all of the time and energy that has been put into what I think could be personal conversations or the time and resources being used in a more productive solution focused way such as restorative justice, restorative conversations, um, in a non-public manner. I am embarrassed as a public elected official that we have wasted each other's time, staff time, um, the public's time and folks who are still tuning in with us. I, I can't imagine how this looks and I would like to implore us, especially using my identity as a black woman and part of a BIPOC population, but I am black. But I understand that there are many diversifications and many identities that fit into that. And so because it seems that there is a lot to be said, there are a lot of tensions, there are a lot of personal feelings connected to this topic in particular. I would implore, I don't know, um, Madam Mayor, please correct me if I say anything legally off, but caucusing, we all understand the importance of the diversification of identities, of voices, of cultures, of religions, of it all. We can learn from each other and we can spend so much more time in a more intimate and healing way than we are showing up tonight. And I'm sorry that I have to say that, but I'm also grossly disgusted at the erroneously wrong way race, religion and difference is being centered in this conversation. Um, I hate to resort to this, but some of you may have, uh, seen a, a film called Bamboozled. I feel like we're in a minstrel stroll and we just need to stop this because we're getting further and further from policy and this is personal. And it's embarrassing. And as someone who's a young professional who's aspiring to look to the past to inform our future, not to make the same mistakes, but to grow better, I'm embarrassed because this is not mentorship or what I would like to state claim as a, a body of this, um, member, a, a member of this body. Um, as well as someone who's striving towards making change. Madison cannot claim that it wants change, but be unwilling to change. So please, let's stop this. We have one more agenda item to get through. There are other ways that we can handle this means of communication. We are at work. Let's be professional and end it. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Um, I do, just, you, you left me a small opening there and so I'll, I'll take it just to remind you all, while I fully support, uh, the, the feeling of, uh, conversations amongst the council and, um, some resolution that i- is not happening on the council floor. We do need to be careful of creating quorums or negative quorums. Um, and so again, here is a place where a council chief of staff might be able to help facilitate the appropriate conversations. And failing that, perhaps your, your council staff could step in and, and help with that. Um, but I would just encourage you all to be very mindful of, um, the creation of quorum. Alder Curry?
I'm sorry, there was one more point that I wanted to bring up in terms of being respectful and that is acknowledging that we have a BI- BIPOC member in leadership on our common council executive committee and that is Vice President Martin. And to be respectful that she is here with us. She has not shared her comments, but that should also speak volumes to us.
Thank you, Alder. I, I have no other alders in the queue. The motion before us, uh, is to adopt the ordinance amendments um, with the addition of an effective date of April nineteenth, twenty twenty-two. All those in favor of adopting the ordinance amendments, aye. Those opposed, no. Uh, as the clerk, as your name is called and the clerk will please call the roll. Alder Halverson?
No.
No? Alder Harrington McKinney?
No.
No? Alder Heck?
Aye.
Aye? Alder Lema?
Aye.
Aye? Vice President Martin?
Aye.
Aye? Alder Miyazi?
No.
No? Alder Revere?
No.
No? Alder Vittavir?
Aye.
Aye? Alder Wehelie?
No.
No? President Abbas?
No.
No? Alder Aboris is absent. Alder Benford?
No.
No? Alder Bennett?
Aye.
Aye? Alder Carter?
No.
No? Alder Conklin?
Aye.
Aye? Alder Curry?
As.
Aye? Alder Evers?
Aye.
Aye? Alder Figaro Cole?
Aye.
Aye? Alder Foster?
Aye.
Aye? Alder Furman?
Aye.
Aye? Madam Mayor, I have eleven ayes and eight nos. Thank you, Madam Clerk. With eleven ayes, the motion passes and we'll move on to item seventy-four. Um, just a reminder that item seventy-four is on for introduction only, so the question is, uh, additional referrals. Alder Furman?
Uh, Mayor, point of order, I'm going to withdraw my name as sponsorship on this item.
Thank you, Alder Furman. So Alder Furman, uh, withdraws his sponsorship of item seventy-four. Um, which, uh, I'm sorry, it's after midnight. I'm not sure of the right language. Uh, it, it can't, uh, move forward without a sponsor. Um, so it makes the question moot. Um, unless somebody, don't do this, wants to have themselves as a sponsor. Seeing nobody who wants to have themselves as a sponsor, uh, the item is withdrawn. Uh, and, uh, we do not have to discuss additional referrals to the item. Um, and that thankfully is the last item that was excluded from the consent agenda. Alder Halverson, it is your turn.
Madam Mayor, move to adjourn.
Is there a second? It is seconded by Alder Curry. Uh, is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor of adjournment? Seeing no objection, we are adjourned. Thank you all. I, I hesitate to say it, but Happy New Year.